All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is our City Commission meeting here on April 25th. To start the meeting, I am going to ask you to join me for a moment of silence, and then we'll move on to Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll move through the agenda. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, next we'll have roll call.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Present.
Commissioner Prudue.
Present.
Commissioner Robbins.
Present.
Commissioner Asasi.
Present.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, and Commissioners, can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Moody and Commissioner Knight?
To vote.
Support.
All right, moved in supported, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you. Next, I'll introduce our interpreters tonight, so if you need assistance with interpretation services, you are welcome to come forward and let us know.
Good evening, my name is Sandra Nickel. We are pleased to provide Spanish interpretation services this evening. This includes interpretation during the meeting and for those who want to provide public comments. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Sandra Nickel. Estamos complacidos de proveer servicios de interpretación en español esta noche. Esto incluye interpretación durante la reunión y para aquellos que quieran proveer comentarios públicos.
Thank you. All right, next we'll take us to our first opportunity for public comment. So let me walk you through the agenda in case this is your first time here at the meeting. So this is an official city business meeting, and we have a couple opportunities for public comment. So the very first one is public comment on agenda items. So earlier today, we had a number of standing committee meetings where we worked through a number of issues and items. So the first opportunity for public comment will be specifically on agenda items that we're voting on tonight. A couple things for our public comment, we asked you to come up here to this podium. You share your name, the city that you live in. We'll give you up to three minutes to speak. For the first opportunity for public comment, we'll ask you to be explicit about what agenda item you're referring to. And then if you are here tonight to be heard on our scheduled public hearings, we have three scheduled public hearings. One is a public hearing on the proposed acquisition of small unmanned aerial system technology, or drones. So we'll start that off with a presentation and update from our chief, and then we'll open it up for public comment. We also have a public hearing on the necessity of a three-year special assessment for enhanced services in the downtown improvement district. This is District Roll 8780. And then we also have a City Commission public hearing where this body sits as an appellate body. So we'll hear a special assessment on Special Assessment Nuisance Rule 8776. So if you are here to speak on any of those three items, I'm going to ask you to stay put until we open up those public comment periods. So we'll start with our first opportunity for public comment. And just a few reminders, we do have up on the screen there, expected meeting procedures. So we ask that you come to the podium, as I said, share your name. And then we also want to make sure that everyone who wishes to speak can do that without being interrupted or being intimidated. So we ask that you refrain from clapping, or cheering, or booing, using profanity, vulgar language, threats, or name-calling. And also, please, make your comments to us up here and not to anyone in the audience. And please refrain from pointing out or confronting anyone in the audience that you may disagree with. People are allowed to come up and share their opinion whether we agree with them or not. So with that, I'll open up the first public comment period. And again, this is public comment on action items or agenda items that we voted on earlier today. All right.
Hi, I'm Emma, from Grand Rapids, living in Grand Rapids. Speaking on three items, Fiscal Committee Item Number One, Appointments Committee Number Two, and Committee of the Whole. I'll start with Committee of the Whole. The FY, FFY 2021 through FFY 2025 Regional Consolidated Housing and Community Development Plan. The item that was slightly edited, 600,000 to 24 condo units through the Community Homes Land Trust. Community Homes Land Trust is, Community Land Trusts are great, a great option for creating equity. And I noticed that it's for 80% AMI and below. Just want to make sure that those who are in that income bracket are also able to afford these places. So right, it's delineated to people in the income bracket. We want to make sure that those prices reflect that as well. And I noticed in the sort of budget breakdown, I know that there's probably going to be more specifics, but the one that was provided to the public, there is 288,000 delineated for public safety. And I noticed that it's to all the neighborhood associations. I would like to know what that public safety means, and if it's for policing. I ask that that would be reflected in the budget rather than make it look like it's housing, which then it wouldn't be. And then also for these programs, we really got to make sure that the public out there knows about this aid. You know, there's, working with my clients, that's one of the biggest things is navigating these resources. If you, they may be there, if you don't know how to use them and where they are, it really prolongs those periods of homelessness and those periods where approaching homelessness, where you may end up losing your home because you didn't know a resource was there. Fiscal Number One, Resolution Authorizing GRPD Recruit Classes. We don't need more police. I say this every time I'm here, we don't need more police. It's the opposite of what we need. That 93,000 could be used in housing, healthcare. I mean, we'd beat that pretty hard into you for a while, and that's because it's the truth. And then Appointments Number Two, I saw that there was a new person appointed to the Police Civilian Appeals Board. Great, but that Police Civilian Appeals Board has virtually no power. It only has the power to suggest things to this committee, which is basically the same power that any other citizen has, right? So how are we able to hold the police accountable if all we can do is just say things out loud? Right, that doesn't do anything. Reflected in the Paul Mayhew correspondence as well, really sums that up.
Thanks. All right, others wish to be heard, again, this is on action items.
How you doing? I'm going to speak on Committee of the Whole, the Resolution approving, funding, awarding the funds, the CBGG funds. Today, I had got a note that I was invited to go watch some 3D printed houses, to actually watch a 3D printed house being printed live. So as we, I listened to the Committee of the Whole earlier and then listened to the cities try to find innovative ways to create housing, because we're going to need 34,699 units? We need to think about 3D printed homes. I know we've got the tiny home projects going on and stuff like that, but we need to find other innovative ways to attack the housing crisis. So our houses' population, I got to connect with the fire captain who actually works with the houses' population, and he let me know that he likes the work that I'm doing. I didn't even know we had a fire captain that actually works with the houses' population, but that's what good works do, you attract cool people, and people like your work. But I would like for you guys to consider 3D printed homes to be able to attack the housing crisis. Put some solar panels, and some geothermal, and some appliances, and some beautiful appliances, and make it affordable, low-profit housing. As we 3D print these houses, we can create low-profit houses so people can be able to create equity, because regardless of where the neighborhood is, is the city of GR, the property value is going to go up. I've never heard of property value of a 3D printed house going up, but I know it would, because it's a house, and I'd like to see that for our community. Regardless of who it is, I don't care who it is, I don't care if you don't like me. I just want everybody to be able to have a house in some type of comfort. Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Others wish to be heard on agenda items?
Hello, Brandon Belsky, Second Ward. I am very excited to hear the focus has been moved towards both equity and housing. I know Mayor, at one of the last City Commission meetings, you ended your speech and the entire meeting with a rousing call for housing in a full spectrum, that perhaps this problem is beyond this city. And I am happy for the discussion and the commitment you made even earlier today that we can partner with the nonprofits, the experts who know how to give direct, immediate care to those most vulnerable who need it now. But even beyond those who are in emergency, that we should treat this as a public health emergency, that millions of direct funds should go to the most vulnerable, which is 0% AMI, the ones who, yes, have the most chronic health conditions, the mental health issues. And one thing that was focalized in earlier meetings today was also that the mental health services that we have in our community focus too on crisis, that our society focuses on these blips of crisis, that we're constantly in this cycle of insecurity, this cycle of violence. And one of the biggest crimes we face, knowing that public health is an issue, you know what the biggest crime is? Wage theft. And what does our police force do against wage theft? When that's a direct crime that you might not be able to touch physically, but believe me, it physically touches thousands of grand rapidians. One of our key establishments, a very popular restaurant, Tacos El Cunado, was just busted for this very thing. So we know these things happen. And how do we come together as a city to see that vested interests of money and power are impeding us and keeping us from moving forward? That this valuation, this fundamental valuation, needs to shift to the most vulnerable, please. We can talk all we want, but housing next, at its fundamental core, is still allowing these shark rates, these shark situations of profit, where they gobble up demand in this national-scale intentional model process that is boom and bust every so many years. Since 2008, the banks were bailed out and the people were sold out, and this is alive and well today. And I ask you, please, to acknowledge this, to acknowledge the people suffering most beyond just words. We had a dangerous recommendation from John O'Connor today to bring back the very criminalization values, and in the same breath, say, I don't want to criminalize houselessness, but we do need to get them off the streets. We can't have them in front of our business ways. If we can't together collectively deal with this problem in a humane way, then we are perpetrators of violence, direct violence.
All right, thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening. Daniel Scott, longtime resident of Grand Rapids. Committee on the Whole. Just the finances. First of all, I want to commend you for a portion of the budget going towards home repair services of Kent County. That's a very good organization. I know some people personally that are employed with that. And of course, they are helping many of our very poor residents. I don't know if it's too late to make an appeal to direct other funds. I've mentioned before Leslie King, who has done more than I know of to combat human trafficking and sex slavery in our city. Since 2005, when she founded Sacred Beginnings. Let me quote here from the internet, "It's the only survivor-led, peer-mentored program in Michigan for those who have been sexually exploited and trafficked. King and her team have reached more than 20,000 people with their weekly street outreach since 2005, and served more than 2,300 people in their transition homes." Again, I would like to appeal to any funds that could be directed towards mothers and fathers that, because perhaps they feel they don't have the funds to support a child unexpectedly, unwantedly, that a lot of this money could go to support them. I think that would change many of their minds about having their child murdered. And finally, I noticed some funds going to a new water department position, which I would support. I just want to remind you, though, that because of the murder pill RU486, now being dispensed without even a prescription, that's going into our water system. It's called a human pesticide. Not only does it murder the baby, but it also brings the pills into the water system. And the amount that's going into the water system is much more than you might hear in the news, because now it's over 50% of all babies that are murdered are by this pill. So maybe one of these inspectors could spend some time making sure our drinking water is safe. Thank you.
All right, others wish to be heard? Again, this is on action items.
For the reminder. Because I must be slow. So I'm going to speak on the 93,000 you guys want to train more of your little minions. I'm just so concerned because...
Please start with your name and the city you live in.
Oh, I figured we knew each other by now, but Kai, always from here. Anyways, the 93,000 that you guys wish to have to train more minions, right? But I'm not understanding that, because you also want drones, because you're understaffed, but you also are just recruiting all these men and women, because didn't a class just graduate recently? I'm not understanding. If I pulled a handful of teachers from GRPS, I can tell you that they could tell you that they could use that 93,000. I'm sure they don't want the collective 93,000 up out of their pockets that they have to dish out every year to teach these kids in your public school systems. I'm just, I'm almost at a loss at this point. You guys find all these nook and crannies to like figure out how to get more money to these people, right? To this fraternity? Just funneling more money so that they can in turn funnel more money in for you? Because it's the end of the month. It's hot out here. That's what we say, it's hot out here, right? Cops are everywhere, everywhere you turn, especially on the southeast side. Why? Because they have to turn a buck. Why don't they just start fundraising for themselves at this point? $93,000 can go to our children, and you instead want to give it to men and women who are going to take and criminalize those children, because you failed to provide enough in order to keep them out of survival mode. I haven't been here in a while, but I'm glad I'm back. It's been comfortable sitting up here, doing your yays and your nays. How disappointing.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, friends. Mark from Grand Rapids. Okay, Fiscal Committee Number One. The recruitment of those who want to join the GRPD. I couldn't care less about the funding. I want to know how will they be trained? How, who are going to be recruited? That's what I want to know. What the demographic is going to be when it comes to this recruitment? I do not want to see a situation like, once again, down in Jackson, Mississippi, I do not want to see a situation like, once again, down in Jackson, Mississippi, where the dumb governor over there has hoodwinked the individuals who live in their city. They go recruit basically a separate, all-white police force to patrol the only white subdivision in Jackson. Quite frankly, for the sole purpose of keeping the black residents out. Don't want that to happen here. Don't want it here. Can't have it here. No way, no how. Now, think about this, because I don't want to see that happen here. That is a problem. So if there is no diverse recruitment, that falls on the feet of you because you allowed it to happen. Thank you, and I'll be back later.
Okay, thank you. All right, others wish we heard? Again, this is on agenda items.
Hi, I'm Patricia Sizik. I live on the northwest side of Grand Rapids. I've lived here since 2001, and I want to give my opinion of what these people are demanding.
No, no, but, yep, speak to us, not to anyone in the audience.
And...
Pardon?
I just wanted to...
And Patricia, what item are you speaking to?
I'm speaking on, I would like to have more police officers. I would like to have two in every car. I would like to have the drones if these people, anybody doesn't want them.
We're not talking about the drones yet. That's a separate public hearing.
All right, all right.
If you want to hold off and wait till we open up that public hearing?
Well, I'm, I want, I'm questioning all these housing. I want to know, there's a lot of places that could be rented if these people didn't destroy the houses they rent.
Patricia, what item, what agenda item are you speaking about?
The housing.
The CBPG funding?
Yes.
The CBPG funding?
Yes. I don't think we need to put all this money into this housing. I don't think we have room for it. And we don't have, my street alone gets full of cars parked because they don't have parking for these homes. And I can't even, lots of times, get out of my driveway. I'm fortunate to have a driveway, but I can't even get out of it because there are so many cars up and down our street and we can't even get up and down our street at times. Our plows, drivers can't always get down our street because they do not follow the odd even. And I think it's time that we start paying attention on fixing our roads because all these cars, our streets are full of holes. My street is literally full of holes. And I think it's time we start putting money into fixing Grand Rapids streets and get them ready for people to be on. And I think it's time that we need to take care of our senior citizens so that we're safe to be out and go for a walk without tripping down our sidewalks or trying to...
Don't let her speak. Huh? Go ahead.
And it's, it's just, where are we putting our priorities? We're bringing in more and more people, but what about us that have lived here for years? I was born and raised in Grand Rapids.
All right, thank you. Your time's up. Thanks. All right, others wish we heard on agenda items?
I'm Carrie. I live here in Grand Rapids. I want to speak about the fiscal committee, number one, the $93,000 that you would like to give to GRPD. Again, as I've said many times, as other people here have too, GRPD does not need any more money. They do not need any more police. We've seen time and time again how they misuse the funding that they already have. We already know that they have 30 civil rights cases against them. They have several federal lawsuits against them. They were found guilty last July of repeatedly violating the Fourth Amendment. We already know that the training that they receive is not nearly enough for the police that we do have. It requires 1,500 hours to become licensed as a cosmetologist. Only 549 hours of training are required to become a police officer. Please make that make sense for me. So, you know, we want to keep throwing money at them when they're not doing what they should be doing already. You know, we keep adding money for new vehicles, for drones, to bring more cops on the payroll. We gave them 6% raises this year, this last year. You keep throwing and throwing money at them while they keep misusing their power, as has been shown over and over and over again in court cases, that this city keeps settling for hundreds of thousands of dollars, millions of dollars, that you're paying out to people for the misuse of this police force regularly. There's a cop on trial for murdering an unarmed citizen right now, and you want to throw more money at them. Please make that make sense for me. We should not be giving them any more money until they can prove that they can actually do the right thing and do their jobs the right way. It is ridiculous to me that you want to keep giving them more constantly when they can't do what they need to do now.
All right, thank you. Others wish we heard?
Lucas, first ward. Police training budget. So I've talked off the cuff before about the sick and twisted mentality that we promote and accept in our post-9/11 brainwashing in our country concerning law enforcement. And I don't know enough, and I'm going to stand here and admit that I haven't looked at it in enough detail, to talk about the value of the money. My problem is the culture. They said earlier, who is going to be recruited? And black, white, purple, doesn't matter if they're trained to believe that there are bad guys everywhere. There are bad guys everywhere. Drew, there's a bad guy under your seat. Maybe you got lucky, you'll win one today. There are issues that are not within your control. Chief and I have a little bit of a positive relationship. I know that that's probably going to cost me with some of the folks that I'm sitting with. We're both out-of-town guys that came from bigger places to this beautiful little city that we see so much promise in. And when we talked about his trip to Gaylord to get certified, he expressed some concern to me about the balance of the kinds of training they focused on. That's a problem. When the chief of the biggest, best up-and-coming option of cities in this state finds fault in the certification process and the way that that figures into what's being given to officers, that's a bad criticism to have. And I think we need to give some time and consideration to that. Go fight to change it. I forgot what it was, and I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but it struck me that the incoming chief would call out concerns about the certification process as an outside person looking in. So it's the training, it's the indoctrination, it's the culture. We can't keep doing what we're doing. We can't keep this thin, blue-lined bull crap and its flag-desecrating sticker-for-the-bumper going in our culture. I think that's really the core of what people want to see change.
All right, thank you. All right, others wish we heard?
Hello, my name is Emma. I used to live in Grand Rapids. I work in Grand Rapids, so I pay taxes in Grand Rapids and speak about the fiscal committee resolution number one in this agenda of adding money to the police department. And speaking of training for police department, my cousin used to train at the police academy in Kalamazoo, and he was the, he taught how to shoot to the academy people, and his word said, "We train them on how to shoot to kill because dead people don't talk." So that's the type of training they receive. That's my personal testimony. So instead of giving $93,560 to this type of training, I believe it should be going to somewhere where it can be education, housing, all the other things that our city is suffering instead of trying to recruit people for police department. Back in 2018, I believe, 18 or 19, the Grand Rapids Public Schools had a course on how to become ICE agent. And given the Grand Rapids Police Department, Grand Police Public School has like 43%, back then, 43% of students that came from a Latinx community, training them on how to police ICE agents is, it wasn't good. So we raced up to the Grand Rapids Public Schools and they retracted the course. So I'm asking the Grand Rapids City to retract this money or not give them this money. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Others wish we heard?
Hello, my name is Eileen. I'm a resident of Grand Rapids. I would like to just step up, and I don't have much planned because I didn't know about that aspect of the discretionary budget going to police training, but I wanted to add my voice to everyone else's calls for it to not go through for the $93,000 to not be spent on being added to the police budget. I also think that it's, I like what the one gentleman had to say about how it being an aspect of our culture needs to be something that we consciously think about and consciously think about how we're going to move forward with, because modern policing is something that arose out of the Industrial Revolution. It arose, city by city in America, were developing their own police departments largely in response to worker unionization efforts and attempts by workers to kind of collectivize and ask for better working conditions, which I'm sure there's no one really who has any knowledge of American history who doesn't understand that early 20th century working conditions were awful and definitely were something that we needed to move on from. And how an institution like that, an institution that also existed and was brought about largely out of a motivation to oppress black people in the American South and make sure that they could be kept in line and other minorities could be kept in line, is not really an institution that we can look to, to exist cohesively with a society that is meant to be democratic and is meant to be egalitarian and is meant to be one where people can speak their minds and have their interests represented within what is specified in American law and not face repercussions for exercising their rights. And police departments just over and over again show that they really struggle to permit that in citizens of a nation. And it's just kind of hard to really understand how you can arm an organization and you can make them do things that, you know, might reasonably make them fear for their lives and think that that's going to end up going well as time goes on. I just don't think that if we kind of were to be introduced to the idea of police departments today and what their responsibilities are and their capabilities are, that we would go through with enacting them. Thank you.
All right, others wish we heard?
Haley, second ward. So we're going to give training to how many police officers, like 10 more, for 93K? Why do they get free training when I had to go to college for six years to become a speech-language pathologist and I'm like 80-something K in debt? But they get to go learn how to shoot guns and kill people for free? How does that make any sense? That's pretty much all I have to say about that. I'm in so much debt just to get underpaid and work in the medical field and help others while they get to harm others for free and educate themselves for free. Also, my clinicals, I think, were roughly 1,200 hours, not including my actual class time, and their training's like 500-something, right? Yeah, not cool. Okay, I'll be back up later. Bye.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close that public hearing, and that will take us to approval of our minutes. So these are minutes from our meeting on April 11th. Commissioners, can I get a motion?
Subot, support.
All right, moved and supported. Any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to petitions and communications.
First one is communication received from Mark Baker, Soft Lights Foundation urging the commission to stop the switch to LED streetlights.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Mary Lynn Noah urging the commission to include safety in fund expenditures related to the proposed special assessment.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from David Emden regarding ongoing concerns of 38 Commerce.
That is received and filed.
And communication received from Paul Mayhew regarding police review.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to reports of city officers, and we have three items before us tonight.
The first one is comp patrolers' report for the period of March 29, 2023 through April 11, 2023, in the amount of $15,996,968.73.
That is received and filed.
Treasurer's report for the period of March 29, 2023 through April 11, 2023.
That is received and filed.
And the city clerk submitted a report entitled Determination of Local Officers' Compensation Commission Establishing Salaries for the Elected Officials.
And that is received and filed. All right, next that will take us to our consent agenda. So our consent agenda, our items that we talked about earlier today in one of our standing committee meetings where there was a unanimous vote, so tonight with one voice vote, we'll adopt those items. Commissioners, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Subot, moved.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I'll make a comment.
Commissioner, please.
Yeah, because I know there's been a lot of public comment here today on the item of funding more training for officers. So, you know, with a lot of the comments that were shared today, I empathize and see your concerns, your frustration with some outcomes and how policing has been done in this city. I've also heard loud and clear over the last few years that to have better policing, we need better training. And so I think this is one step in supporting that. I also know that, or what I have heard and observed by our current chief, is a focus on better training, promotion of folks who lead training within the department, as well as a new, I believe, a newer initiative, community-informed law enforcement training, where everyday folks can say, "Police department needs training in this area." We'll have a conversation, and the department will consider it. Before I was elected, I served on our Community Relations Commission, and we talked about the gap in training around serving folks who are deaf or hard of hearing. the gap in training around serving folks who are deaf or hard of hearing. And through that conversation, it has really led to a new initiative and training to make sure that that community had proper attention and training protocols. So I just want to acknowledge the comments, the concerns, and saying that in order to get better policing, we need better, more robust training. And so I think that this is in an effort to do that. So thank you.
Do not interrupt Commissioner Perdue. Do not, hey, do not interrupt Commissioner Perdue. No, I am, you are being disruptive. You are being disruptive. Before I call the question, I'll just also add, thank you Commissioner Perdue for your comments, I'll just also add clarification, question and comment about the committee of the whole item number one, just to clarify that JAG funding in this recommendation that we voted on today actually goes to support neighborhood associations to do crime prevention. So those dollars go directly to our neighborhood associations for crime prevention efforts. And yes, they do work with our department, but they are out there in our neighborhoods doing great work. So with that, commissioners, any other questions or comments?
I did want, I had one endpoint and that was just an invitation to say that we can have conversation outside of three minutes. I think it will lead to more robust conversation and two-way understanding. So I imagine we'll have a late night, but I'm committed to staying after if folks want to talk today, but also our phone lines, our emails are also open so that we can have more substantial conversation. So did also want to add that because I know we have a lot of important issues on the docket and we will not be able to move forward together without a two-way dialogue and understanding. So thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, commissioners, that will take us to, let's see ordinances to be adopted tonight. We have one ordinance before us.
It's the ordinance amending section one of the budget ordinance 2022-13 for fiscal year 2023, amendment number 13.
All right, can I get a motion?
Subводs.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioner O'Connor from our fiscal committee, want to tell us about this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. 10 items tonight on the ordinance. Item one, which is actually exciting to see this happening, we've been getting a lot of requests regarding our renewable efforts in terms of our fleet services and we're going to be purchasing two fully electric street sweepers to help both with the cleanliness efforts in our city, but also have two fully electric ones, which is really, I think, a great initiative, especially given the fact we did compare it to diesel and hybrid and natural gas sweepers and we did make the determination that it finally makes fiscal sense to do something fully electric in that space. Item two is related to expenditures to do some repairs in the downtown improvement district snowmelt system. Item three is an economic development department reimbursement for the Smart Zone LFA. Item four is just some expenditures regarding capital improvements to our cemetery system. Five, six, seven, and eight are related to both Grow 1000, supporting that program as well as our Challenge Scholars Program that's through Grand Rapids Public Schools. Item nine is an expenditure of $175,000 for some due diligence related to the parcel we're purchasing at 850 Pennell for our new fire training center. That one does impact our contingent balance. And item 10 is to hire a new plumbing inspector, one position. We began with $1.585 million with the 175 out of our contingent fund, it leaves us a contingent balance of $1.41 million.
Great, thanks, Commissioner. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, that's a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Sassi.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yes.
Commissioner Perdue.
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. And commissioners, can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
Subвод, support.
All right, moved and supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, that will take us to our three scheduled public hearings tonight. So as I indicated, we have the first one, which is with the public hearing on the proposed acquisition of small unmanned aerial system technology. So I'll start that off with our police chief, Chief Winstrom. He has a PowerPoint presentation and information to share. I'll open up to see if my colleagues around this table have any questions or comments and then if you are here tonight to be heard on this item, you'll be able to come up afterwards. If you are here to be heard on the special assessment for downtown improvement, I'll call that public hearing next. And then if you are here on the special assessment nuisance roles, nuisance role appeal, that will be the third public hearing that we have tonight.
As we're getting set up, Mayor and Commissioner, thank you very much. I do want to say that this is the third time I've been in this room discussing this topic and on the Grand Rapids Police website are videos of the two other presentations for even more detailed information. The first slide is going to be just a screenshot of the priorities in our strategic plan and what you'll see fits in with the acquisition of drones for small unmanned aerial systems and that is safety innovation and engagement. But one word you don't see on here, and Mr. Lever reminded me of it, is culture. And that is something that I've been trying extremely hard since day one to change and the anecdote that Mr. Lever chaired is true and that is when I went up to Gaylord, I spent a full day training with a rifle, a shotgun, handgun, with my weak hand, my strong hand, laying down, standing up on a knee, left-handed, right-handed, darkness and light, a full day of that. And what I realized was the culture seemed to be that we were very, very good at shooting a firearm, but the culture that we're striving to be is a police department that is extremely good at using our strongest tool, which is of course our voice and looking for those opportunities where force is not needed. And I will say on a positive note as well, we have a new majority leader who's a resident of Grand Rapids, Senator Winnie Brinks. I've had many conversations with her about changes to the MCOS training as well, I spoke to Tim Bourgeois, the head of MCOS, and they are moving quickly with legislation for the whole state to require this sort of training that we've been bringing through our training program here since I'd been here. So I think as a whole, you'll see policing in the state culture change and I'm very proud of the culture change that we've seen so far. So to get back to drones, the immediate benefits, better and much more effective crime scene and traffic crash processing, ensuring safety for large events, providing more efficient and effective location of individuals in danger and those who pose a danger to our residents. The process for both the acquisition and the creation of a policy is found in administrative order 1503 and this is a very wording which would appear in our policy here, underlined, which starts with a wording to utilize UAS as a resource. And prior to, I should mention too, so this isn't the final policy as written, we're not completed with our community engagement, but prior to me coming back to this board for final approval, there will be a draft policy posted on the department website along with the other drone information for the public to see. General location required by 1503 is of course the city of Grand Rapids. Where legal and where needed? And even if we take the drones outside the city, they will fall under the provisions of both 1503 and our policy. They will be under our rules, not the rules of the jurisdiction that we go to. UAS will not be used if there's a reasonable expectation of privacy, except of course, if there's a search warrant or recognized exception to search warrant in essence, imminent danger must be present. When specifically will we use SUAS for? Crash and crime scenes, search and rescue, natural or man-made disasters, critical incidents, inspections, trainings, and events where the UAS can enhance our ability to protect life and policy. I'm going to expand on this in the last slide, but with a drone, the concern is over capture of data. Other issues that other places have in the country like weaponization or facial recognition are not a concern here simply because they are prohibited. The plan is to require and train our operators to not record where there's an expectation of privacy within the policy of law and a prohibition on collecting information in violation of the Constitution. Other requirements of 1503 are needed after an RFP to complete this, so I couldn't answer every one of these questions, but they certainly will be answered prior to coming forward with a request for money. All flights will be monitored in real time and information accessible only in accordance with 1503 and the law. Parts of 1503 are written to ascertain how outside departments would cooperate with GRPD, since we are GRPD, they don't impart on us. Any additional requirements? Again, this section asking what will be shared with the GRPD. We will share the information with other law enforcement agencies only as appropriate within the confines of the law. All drone operators will be certified for federal law and every department member is going to be trained on the policy of drones. I mentioned this earlier, the potential for over collection of data and the intrusion on privacy is a concern. We mitigate this through training, policy accountability, and OPA's auditing. All flights are recorded and retained consistent with current video retention policies. You see here, for example, a felony is always retained at least 7300 days, but certainly past at least the point of trial or any litigation. Access to recorded information is restricted to compliance within the law, including FOIA and SIGIS. Private video would not be revealed, released, except when required by the law. Anytime a video is either recorded or viewed, that data is recorded in the evidence management system. All data by policy and by any contract which we would sign will be owned by the Grand Rapids Police Department, not a third policy. This language will be included in any final policy. Again, any data will only be released in compliance with the law. We envision using evidence.com, which we use right now for body worn camera and in-car camera, or certainly a similar evidence management system with the same capabilities. GRP and OPA leadership will be responsible for compliance very quickly. As you can see, what you have on the right is what currently if you're in a traffic crash, even a very serious one, the results of our evidence text will be, they will provide a picture such as this, as you can see the image on the left, much more effective for core purposes, for insurance purposes, it's just providing a better police service. This, I don't know if I can get this to play.
Beanie in progress, 2480 West River Drive, northeast at Perry's and Gilligan's, they can see somebody breaking in.
34, I'll be in route.
43, 31 will be in route as well.
31, I caveat, send it to you.
40, 39.
40, 39.
Somewhere incident about a week ago, subject taking catalytic converters using the white line trail.
Throw, this light almost hit him, turn back north.
Just go forward, you can see the dot on the right with the flashing of lights, that's a flashlight.
Now east, straight, direct east, direct east.
You can see these are, this is very dark and wooded, you wouldn't be able to see these individuals.
Trail.
If not for the drone. So I was challenged and it broke it. I can win. Challenged by Commissioner Moody last time, what other agencies have drones? And one of the slides of, if you do end up being able to go back there, you'll take a look. I'll just give you a few examples. Our neighbor's Walker, Walker has 38 sworn police officers. Our neighbor's Wyoming has 99 sworn police officers. Our neighbors in Kentwood announced last night they have 71 police officers that they'll be receiving drones. Big Rapids, 18 police officers. They have drones, of course, Kalamazoo, Lansing, all the other larger sized departments in the area have drones. Our friends at the Michigan State University Police, which we assisted the night of their tragic shooting, also equipped their officers with drones. Next slide, if you can get there. So I was also challenged about privacy protections and what you saw the last slide was all of the dozens and there might be over 100 agencies across the, across the state that have this tool which provides better police service. Commissioner Knight reminded me yesterday that, I mean, the last time we spoke about this, that different communities in the city are impacted by police service and I acknowledge that and that's why it's so important to get input here tonight, to get out in the communities. I have a meeting tomorrow with the president of the NAACP, we're going to set up another community forum where I can gather more input. We've already been out to neighborhood associations and we'll continue that when the neighborhood associations have meetings over the next few weeks, we're going to stop and listen to them about drones. But providing adequate police service, whether you live in the third ward, which I know there's a lot of supporters of third ward economic development sitting behind me right now, we agree on quite a bit, but whether you sit on, whether you live in the third ward, the second ward, Walker or Big Rapids, you deserve adequate police service. And you should be expected to receive that here in the second biggest city in the state of Michigan and because of the benefits of this drone program, I think that it's the right thing to do for the citizens of Grand Rapids. And that's all I have. Thanks for listening to me for, many of you for the third time.
All right, thanks, Chief. Commissioners, any questions for Chief before I open up this public hearing? I'll start, Commissioner Sassi, did you have a hearing? I'll start with Commissioner Sassi and then Commissioner Perdue.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. I am one that has heard this three times. So my question was really around two things. One, I've had a couple of comments to my office about the survey that was shared for individuals to fill out, so I'm wondering if you could overview what some of those questions were in the survey as well as, you know, I think we do surveys and it's never of like, there's three in this category and three in that, but it helps to inform some of the discussions because people like to engage in different ways. So if you could give some overview on that. And then I think this is probably maybe a question for the city manager as it relates to some of the oversight pieces, which you talked a little bit about, but I think that is something that I'd like to bring out a little bit more around what that oversight might look like, what does that actually look like procedurally? What we might have done, I wasn't around the table when, because it's been some time since we, when we enacted body worn cameras, so was there anything that we did in that first year or second year? It was new technology, it was new investment, did we do any specific auditing, any questions around that? So that one question about the survey and then the second question about OPA, that'll probably turn to city manager.
And first of all, I'll tell you, there is a survey online right now in the Grand Rapids Police Department website. It's assembled with all the other information about SUASs. It's a very basic survey, not that helpful for insight. It's pretty much, do you want them, do you not want them? If you do want them, what, under what circumstances do you want them? Find a situation like this, probably more helpful to get more input or conversations. I should say regarding the second question, which of course I'll defer to my boss, but I skipped over again, I did this last time, the most, probably the most important part of the last slide, which says this wording specifically is required by 1503 and will be in the final policy. And it says specifically, in what I mentioned about throwing out Big Rapids, a whole 18 police officers, what Big Rapids does not have is an OPA or anything like the robust protections we have. They don't have this policy, they don't have the level of training that we have, and they don't have this requirement that, and I quote, "The staff of the Office of Oversight and Public Accountability will conduct an investigative audit and prepare an audit summary regarding whether surveillance equipment and/or surveillance services have been misused or overused and whether there have been any other violations of this policy. The staff of OPA is authorized to initiate investigative audits without having received a complaint from members of the public." So Director Davis is authorized to keep track of this and I know it was a commission, a concern of Commissioner Knight, that this could have, you know, any negative policy impacts, could have an adverse impact on certain communities. That's what he's going to be looking at. I'm certainly going to be looking at it too, but when I was hired here, a lot of people in the media were asking me, what are you going to do to restore trust? And what I've learned is that it seems like there maybe never was that trust, so I feel like I'm building that trust. And in the meantime, having a second set of eyes, an independent set of eyes, review this to ensure the integrity of our system is very much welcome.
Thanks, Chief. City manager, want to speak to that and then I'll turn it to Commissioner Perdue?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner, for the question. And Chief is correct, I will add, in addition to the independent office and Mr. Davis is not here, but I think Ms. Abrams here for, from his office tonight in case anybody wants to speak with her afterwards, the Oversight Office, after their audit, is required to publicly publish the results of the audit with any redactions as required by law. There's also another layer of governance and oversight through the Public Safety Committee, which also is to review operational protocols and technology and that has been done to some degree, but they also are responsible for reviewing audit summaries as published by the Oversight Office. And then lastly, the police department, or any department that uses it, also has to continue to produce quarterly reports to OPA and then the Oversight Office will produce an annual report every year on the use of surveillance technology. So there's layers of governance beyond just the police department's own internal purview of the technology.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Perdue?
Yeah, so I know we've had several conversations about this and just want to remind folks that the full, like the in-depth presentation- that the full, like the in-depth presentation and most of the discussion is on some recordings, I shared it earlier today on Facebook. But just wanted to say, in part of that discussion, we talked a lot about definitions, about data, data ownership and deployment. And so I just want to recognize, Chief did send some follow-up, my question was, who will own the data? I think in many, this is a very unregulated space in some instances, and so he was able to send me the copy, and confirms that we would own the data, not the company. So I think that's important when we think about privacy and ownership. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, good point. Commissioners, any other questions or comments for Chief? All right, thank you Chief. All right, so if you are here tonight to be heard on this item, you are welcome to come forward. Again, we ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and we will give you up to three minutes to speak. All right, can, can we, while you're, while you're waiting to speak, can you keep your voices down please, so that we can hear the person that's speaking? Go ahead.
So, something in...
Oh, can you start with your name and the city you live in?
No, thank you. So something in my spirit tells me this public hearing is just a formality, and GRPD is going to acquire drones, no matter what we say against it today. If GRP doesn't get them this time around, there will be another time, and another time, and another. It's important to note that the use of drones raises valid privacy concerns, as they're seen as an invasion of privacy and form of intimidation of community members that are calling for accountability and transparency from our city officials. With any technology, the use of drones in law enforcement should be carefully considered and regulated to ensure that GRPD will be using them responsibly and ethically. The current acquisition and use of surveillance policy doesn't ensure that, even with FAA regulations that are the standard. Residents all over the nation experience civil rights violations often, despite laws meant to protect us from government overreach. And many PDs have increased their use of drones far beyond their initial purposes, and our only hope for protection would be the Public Safety Committee, Office of Oversight and Public Accountability, and you commissioners, but I'm not sorry to say that trust and faith in these bodies of oversight, given what has happened, and is still happening, after the murder of Patrick Leoya. There are too many moving pieces for the people to keep up, or to expect compliance with city surveillance and federal policy. The OPA has very limited power as it relates to GRPD, as well as CAB. The department has overstepped, sidestepped any requests for information. Both OPA and CAB is accountable to the community, but who is Eric and Mark Washington accountable to besides capitalism? This will not benefit public policy or public safety. Current policy gives too many opportunities for Mark Washington and Eric Winstrom to use their own discretion to deploy drones. We know how they feel about grassroots activists and organizers, especially considering their power and positions on policing to keep the people in check. With attention to civil arrests mentioned here in the presentation, the protests that are permitted, or not permitted, shouldn't have to be permitted. We shouldn't need a permit to occupy our streets. The whole point of protests is to disrupt commerce, because capitalism is killing us.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Emma, I say no to drones. So, our Chief of Police is a really, really great schmoozer, really great politician. I can see why he rose to a position where he can be the face of things, right? And he did a lot of time in, not this presentation, the one previous, talking about how drones are just, we're just going to use them to find missing toddlers, that's all, you know? Where, and I'm going to share a little anecdote, very first time I met our Chief of Police, he just has that way about him, makes you, makes you want to trust the white man, you know? You want to trust that white man. And I remember, we were up here, he was standing right here, and we were very upset, we being the citizens and activists upset about, obviously, the murder of Patrick Leoya. And he, and we had, there'd been a previous protest, where we had been kettled at that protest by police, and we had seen drones flying overhead of us, right? Very obviously in coordination with kettling us. And we asked, or we said, you know, why did you use drones? And he's looked, I remember him looking me in the eye and saying, "We don't use drones. We don't use drones, the GRPD doesn't have drones." Making it sound as if they never had any connection to those drones. Those drones are Kent County, Kent County drones assisting GRPD. After that, I never trusted a word Eric Winstrom said again, ever. So I would tell the citizens of Grand Rapids not to trust him either, especially about these drones. Especially when all other surveillance technology, basically everything GRPD has done, has failed to abide by the rights of its citizens. So they're being used for kettling, surveillance technology being in cameras, watching people do mutual aid from atop the children's museum, I don't know why money was needed to do that. So I don't see any additional technology, especially of these capabilities, being for the good of, of Grand Rapids citizens, and in fact, quite dangerous. And to be frank, I don't care if a bunch of these other cities have these drones. Let's be the city that doesn't, let's be the city that's safe, and actually cares about safety, you know? You know what's unsafe? Being on the street at night and Michigan weather. That's unsafe.
Right, thank you. Others wish to be heard?
My name is Christian, I live in the 1st Ward. I haven't been here in a second, because I've been busy with life, working, taking care of myself, paying my bills. It's, it's, it's just concerning that I have to come here every couple months and talk about a new policy that the City Commission is trying to enforce, or a new program, or whatever you want to call it, regards to the City of Grand Rapids Police Department. I mean, it feels like, a lot of you guys maybe campaigned on changing police, when you guys ran for, ran for election this past election cycle. Some of you guys didn't, some of you guys shook hands with police, like Drew Robin. So, I mean, some people just don't care. I wouldn't shake my hands with a police officer from a department who wanted to, you know, who actually killed somebody, I mean, that's, that's not okay. And why would we give them more money and more toys if they have a, what was it, $300 million lawsuit on the table, or something like that? I wouldn't give money to my police department if they were going to cost me millions and millions and millions of dollars in lawsuits. I wouldn't do that. I put policies in place and spend money towards, I don't know, better policing training, because that, the $92,000 isn't better police training, it's just paying for training for police officers, for new recruits that are coming in. So it's just going to train them the same way that they trained Christopher Scher, the same way they trained them to come in and kill a unarmed black man, Patrick Leoya. So when you, when you came out here, you said something about, oh, it's better, better training, it's not better training, it's just training in general. Better training, we should take this $200,000, $200,000 and put better training in place for the Grand Rapids Police Department, if you want to say there's just better training that needs to be done, if that's your excuse that you want to use for the past three years of ignoring activists and people who come, and your constituents who come here and talk to you, and told you that somebody's going to get killed. Now you want to put more money into the hands of those police officers, in the hands of that chief? You want to put money, more toys, to survey people? If you don't think that the police department that has 28 accusations of discrimination against them is going to use police drones for the, in the future five, next five years for some kind of discriminatory practice, you're wrong. You're wrong. The Michigan Department of Civil Rights did not just pass, try to, try to get the federal government to investigate the GRPD for nothing. Why are we giving a department who has 28 accusations of discrimination, police drones? Use that money for some, I'm like, I'm speechless. Like, if I was an elected official and I had to talk to my constituents, look them in the face every day, I wouldn't look them in the face and lie to them that I'm going to change things, when I'm sitting here giving money to people who shoot and kill black people. Who have 28, 28, 28 discrimination charges against them, from Michigan, that is a, that is a state body. You need to listen to them. Justice for Patrick Leoya.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, Carrie, 2nd Ward. Back again to talk about, let's not give them any more money, let's not give them any police drones. You know, once again, we talk about the abuse that GRPD perpetuates daily against the citizens of the city already. It's already been stated during the protests over the last year for Patrick Leoya, there were drones flying over every time we were out there. You know, the chief just said, it's illegal for them to, you know, identify people. GRPD last July was found guilty of repeatedly violating that Fourth Amendment by the Michigan State Supreme Court. They already have a history of breaking that law. What's going to stop them from doing it again? They already have 30 cases with the state civil rights. Looking at them, what's going to stop them from creating more? And yet we want to give them more tools to do that again. More opportunities to track more people. An easier way. They already regularly harass and intimidate the community. And we want to give them more to do that more often, more frequently, easier. It sounds all well and good to use the drones for accident investigation, drones could be wonderful for that. I worked in the construction industry for seven years, we used drones for various reasons, for insurance purposes, for construction sites. There's a multitude of reasons they could be used for good. I have zero trust that GRPD would use them for good. They have proven over and over and over again that we cannot trust them at all, ever, to do the right thing. Justice for Patrick.
Justice for Patrick.
All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Jeff, 2nd Ward, which like the rest of the city, sits on in Schnabyland. I've been part of an organized effort to oppose the GRPD from purchasing and utilizing drones since the proposal was first announced earlier this year. We've created a bunch of educational material, we've disseminated that, and we've invited people to sign our statement of opposition with, as of yesterday, some 660 letters were already sent to the selected body. I also saw the city survey about the GRPD's proposal to use drones, the one that Chief Winstrom mentioned, you know, a survey I found to be misleading and deceptive. While I understand that the city already has a policy in place on technology used by the GRPD, this policy is ultimately meaningless, since the Grand Rapids city officials can always use what they refer to as extenuating circumstances, as justification to use drones to monitor activists, organizers, or protests whenever they feel like it. That's what extenuating circumstances means. You get to determine when to impose that, for whatever reason you decide. So the use of extenuating circumstances was discussed in an April 11th article in MLive, where City Manager Mark Washington said that drones could be used to monitor protests that are, that aren't permitted, and are potentially interfering with roadways. In case there is any confusion about that, most of the autonomous groups that I have been involved in, and many of the people in this room in recent years, we never ask for permission, because we do not need your permission to protest. Because we do not need permission, your permission, or anyone else's permission to protest or to resist oppression. Many of these same groups also engage in disruptive tactics, like shutting down traffic. Disruption of business as usual is a longstanding tradition that has been practiced by social movements since the abolitionist movement, the labor movement, the anti-war movement, the civil rights movement, the environmental justice movement, the climate justice movement, the immigration justice movement, the disability justice movement, the LGBTQ community movement, so therefore we think we're in pretty damn good company. In that same MLive article from April 11th, it also stated that drones may be used by the GRPD, quote, "In the case of civil unrest and large gatherings where an aerial view is necessary to ensure safety and minimize the number of officers involved on the street," said Chief Winstrom, who wrote to the Commissioners in an April 11 memo. Again, extenuating circumstances is the rationale that can be used and will be used in these circumstances. Another thing about the survey on drones that was deceptive was question two, asked about whether or not, or the question was around whether or not drones would, there would be reporting all deployments, making photos, videos, subject to record retention policies, and available under FOIA request records.
Thank you, Jeff, your time's up, thanks.
That's it?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I'll submit the rest of it.
My name is Matt, I live in the 3rd Ward. And that's going to be a resounding no on these drones, and I'm going to explain why. In 2003, a political scientist named Dr. Lawrence Britt outlined 14 defining characteristics of fascism. Now, I could go into all the ways that GRPD and your leadership fits into this, but frankly, I, and no one else in this room, has that kind of time. So I will stick to the matter at hand, you're welcome. So, the second characteristic is disdain for the recognition of human rights. The right to just exist without fear that your conversations are being listened to, that your actions are not being watched and scrutinized, as long as you're just minding your own business, not harming anyone, that is a human right. It is a right that black, brown, indigenous, members of the LGBTQIA+ community do not have! And this will only make it worse. I would ask if you agree with me that that is an inalienable human right, but I don't need to, we know the answer to that. The 10th characteristics, characteristic, is that labor power is suppressed. These will be used to target peaceful protesters, community organizers, and activists. I know it, Winstrom knows it, you know it. Oh, but, if you know what, if that's too vague for you, the 12th characteristic is obsession with crime and punishment, characterized by giving the police almost limitless power to enforce laws. Like, do I even need to say more? Because like, I would honestly love to hear one of you just get up in front of people and explain how giving GRPD the power and ability to put the citizens of Grand Rapids under constant airborne surveillance is not a gross, an abhorrent abuse of yours and their power. Like, I would love to hear that. Look, you know what? If you all move forward with these drones, you might as well start wearing the red armbands over your clothes.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Jose, I live in the 1st Ward, and so I'm just here to say no to drones, like many others before me and many after me will say. So, I just wanted to comment on the survey that went out. I thought it was, you know, a pathetic attempt at community engagement. It was reminiscent of the congressional hearing on TikTok, where, you know, this is how it read to me, "Do you know that drones are going to do amazing things for public safety?" Do you know that drones are going to do amazing things for public safety? Yes or no? It didn't give us an option whether we, whether we wanted to, you know, to comment on whether we don't want drones. It only gave us options of, did you know that these are the benefits? And I think that's very disingenuous in the first place. But I believe that if we're saying yes to drones, we're saying no to housing, we're saying no to, to economic opportunity for our lowest, you know, socioeconomic status folks in Grand Rapids. And if we're increasing funding for policing by doing, or by approving more funding for police, we're moving in the wrong direction. And there's, there's a lot that folks have said already that, that doesn't need to be said, but I really hope that you folks on the commission are listening. As a newly elected board member, I understand that it's not as cut and dry as it looks like at one city commission meeting, but also I know that you can use your voice for the folks that you represent. So John O'Connor, Drew Robbins, that's you for me on the First Ward. And I also attended the Public Safety Committee. And much of the anecdotes that were shared do little to enforce the idea that drones are a necessity. And so that's why I believe you should vote no on drones. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Ains. I live in the Third Ward. I'm here to say to vote no on drones. In his initial presentation to the Public Safety Committee, the police chief made clear that as the police department of the second largest city in the state, they should have drones. Everyone's got them. What he has not mentioned at the Grand Rapids Police Department is also under investigation for twenty-eight different complaints by the Michigan Department of Civil Rights, with at least formal and separate, four formal and separate charges already levied against the GRPD. What the chief did not mention is there is documented evidence that GRPD employs racial bias during traffic stops. So I know there can be pressure to feel like everyone else is doing it. Why not us, given our position in the state? But there's actually a very good reason why not. GRPD has demonstrated history, a demonstrated history of violating the civil rights of Grand Rapids residents, not all of whom are citizens. Drones are known, in fact, that's a story about Captain Vanderkor too, and his close relationship with ICE. Drones are known threats to civil rights because of their capacity for surveillance, violation of privacy, and continuation of racial bias and persecution. Drones are not less invasive, they are more so, no matter the policies in place. In his first presentation, the police chief was also careful to highlight innocent sounding instances for the use of drones, such as looking for a lost child. I'd like to remind us that the police having drones is not the only solution to a case like that. There's a long tradition of neighbors helping neighbors in situations like this. And with the popularity of consumer-level drones, it is possible to organize neighbors to help out and have eyes in the sky in the case of a lost child. And as a parent who has lost their child, I am not underplaying the panic of that situation. But that's just one of the many possibilities for solutions when communities and neighbors work together. Given that the GRPD is known for having the largest part of the city budget and for multiple civil rights violations, we should dispute that it deserves drones simply because it's the police department of the second largest city in the state. The survey the chief referenced is a joke and a sales pitch, and it does not give people the opportunity to speak out against drones. The people of Grand Rapids deserve that money to be invested in them, in us, so we can create community care and safety within us. Police, no matter their training or tech, no matter who holds the data, it does not assure me that the city would hold the data. They do not keep us safe. Defund, defund the GRPD and refund the community.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Lucas, First Ward. I love drones. They're cool, they're fun. I've flown them. They're a great tool. It is fair to say that if you think drones impact privacy, you're not realistic about modern life. We all have a smartphone, that ship kind of sailed. I understand why cops want drones, for reasons that could be honorable, but also still unlock plenty of abuses. Let's all remember that GRPD is working at a massive deficit of trust, a racially informed deficit, which is probably why the mainstream seems willing to welcome this new tool, rubber stamp it, whatever, whatever the cops want. Just the usual reckless, brainwashed nationalism. I look at this like a parent. When your kid proves they can't be responsible with the toys they have, you don't buy new ones for them. Every time GRPD is given an inch, they take a dangerous irresponsible mile. They have the only budget guaranteed by law, and they keep exceeding it. They get body armor, endless ammunition, weapons of war, and then they send the dog in to get stabbed. Given the ability to make traffic stops, they can't accomplish that without executing Patrick Leoya. They promise engagement and transparency, then send out a push-pull design to benefit their spin, and you don't even have to be a marketing pro or political operative to recognize that. And now they expect us to believe that they'll suddenly follow the rules and the laws, that their gangster-run unions help them find every way to subvert and avoid consequences for breaking. Another issue of trust is the notion of ward meetings on this topic, which hasn't happened. Or the fact that various captains, who should be the most in the know, given their rank, have had no clue. And the captain they named as the guru on drones has failed to answer my email with a list of questions and clarifications. Much of that included things I could have supported, but he blew it. The fire department has drones the PD claims are outdated and not suited to their needs. So if you won't just scrap this idea or postpone it, give them the funding. Let them run this program so there's a check and a balance by a department known more for saving lives than taking them recently. When I'm asked as a West Grand Board Member to vote on our letter of support, I will vote no. Since I have not been compelled to believe that this will benefit more people than it might harm, and the progressive neighbors I speak to, many of whom are young and white and not even that likely to get targeted by misuse of drones, also share my lack of trust. And it's going to be a long time before that trust can change.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, I'm Andra. I'm from Grand Rapids. I'd like to state that I'm opposed to spending tax dollars on more drones. I know you already have a large number of them because last summer while protesting, I always seen several flying over me. If you actually care to cut down on crime, we need resources, period. Giving people the basic resources they need to live cuts down on crime. Not adding more cops, not more tactical gear, not surveillance. It's interesting that Chief Winstrom came from Chicago because the citizens of Chicago have fought hard in recent years against drones, even putting written policies into place to ensure it stays that way. Now he's trying it here in Grand Rapids. You can stand up here with your presentations and attempts to glamorize the usage of this technology all you want, but Mark Washington has already disclosed how he plans to use them on protesters. We all get that technology can be a great tool, but technology in the wrong hands with no accountability is a disaster and an infringement on our First Amendment rights. GRPD should not be granted that unfettered right. We all know they have zero accountability. They, as well as all of you, have proven that countless times. I'm still waiting for you to convict Christopher Scher. We're still waiting for justice for Patrick. The OPA is a joke and a waste of money. Like, what do they do? They don't exist to protect us. They exist to keep us quiet, sweep our complaints under rugs, give us the runaround, never follow through or investigate public complaints. There is zero reason for any of us to trust these drones will be used for good measure. Even if you put guidelines and rules into policy to follow, that doesn't reassure us that they'll be followed. Those who are already marginalized and targeted by PAC, LGBTQ+ impoverished neighborhoods, the unhoused, will be disproportionately profiled and surveyed, maybe even used for intimidation by the police. There is no end here in sight. There also is no end as to what can be altered on these drones at a later date, once they're in circulation, like facial recognition, data scanning, scanning software, maybe even weapons.
Time's up. Thanks. All right, others wish to be heard?
Haley, Second Ward. So we are talking about giving, using our tax dollars, about $100,000, if not more, for these drones and the training, blah, blah, blah. Here are some things that $100,000 could do instead. You could hire two full-time social workers for community outreach in the city. Local grassroots organizers use their own money and pay, or, and feed about fifty people a week. For $100,000, at $15 a plate, which that means we're giving them real nice food, that would feed over 6,500 people. $100K could sponsor about two years of college at GRCC for ten students. Not officers, students. It can also, $100K could pay for sixty-seven payments of emergency rent relief in the city, which then prevents more individuals from becoming unhoused. So, I can understand using drones for, you know, accident recovery, finding missing people, but why do the police need them when the fire department have them? When the sheriff's department has, when the state police have them? They're just down the road. I'm sure you've already used them on us. You can get your hands on it. Also, after talking to a drone expert, drones are not allowed to fly directly over a crowd? That's been broken how many times? And one last point. Just because something is a policy or a law, doesn't mean they'll follow it. They haven't followed a lot of policies and laws. They break them all the time. They killed someone, anywhere from speeding to killing somebody. They're flying down our road. They're riding up on the sidewalk on people. They're shooting people and killing them. So just because something's a policy or law, doesn't mean they're going to follow it, and it doesn't mean that people can't change it later. Just thoughts before you vote on this. I say no to drones, especially no to police drones.
All right, thank you. Others wish to be heard?
Yeah, so Tyler, Second Ward. So we always have the conversation of making a safer Grand Rapids and, you know, what that's going to look like. And it always turns to more police, more police. We have to just keep funding them when we never look at what the root of crime is, the lack of resources. What are we doing to address resources? Nothing. Grassroots organizations are doing more work than this city to address this. We work constantly to give food and resources. Yeah, with our own money. No help, no grants. We raise our own money to do this. But instead, we can just throw $100K for more drones? When GRPD already has a highly inflated budget, why can't that come out of their already existing budget? Why are we spending our taxpayer monies? This is unacceptable that our hard-earned money is not going to helping the community, not making things better. It's... I really just don't know what to say anymore. It's... You know, there are, there are options. There are humane options, and we can make a better city. You guys just need to listen and make that better city. I hope you start listening to us.
All right, thank you. Others wish to be heard?
I'm Jay from the Third Ward, and I echo what has been said here about surveillance and the abuse of power that has already regularly happened. I spent my first twenty-six years raised just outside of DC and was already having constant anxiety from the surveillance and things happening. And I moved up here to Michigan, and it was just like, wow, there was this weight lifted off of me. And I've been living on the west side for about ten years now, and introducing just the helicopters and all these other things for, you know, adding surveillance has raised anxiety and brings fear to the people. I see constant posts, and I talk to others, and we don't need to be adding more. I mean, and now we're talking drones. And not only that, but these are potentially weaponized drones. And they're going to be at our city manager's discretion. I need solid examples of when those are going to be appropriate. Would it be this summer of 2020 protests? 2020, or 2022, or sorry, 2022 protests? That would have escalated the situation. We need solid examples for this. Search and Rescue has drones, and yes, and as they said, fund those. If you're talking about search and rescue examples, then fund them. This police department needed to add a clause on sanctity of life to be reminded that lives matter, which is disgusting and terrifying. Eric Winstrom's comments to that was, "To shift from a warrior, I'm sorry, to shift from a warrior mindset to a guardian mindset is terrifying." So much for protect and serve. Give the money back to the community, not trying to get new toys for yourselves. Every dollar that the GRPD asks for takes away from schools, libraries, parks and rec, roadways, and more. GRPD takes up already almost eighty percent of the budget. Leave some room at the table for the rest of us. Do like everyone else in the community has had to do with cut funds, and figure it out. Refund the community, defund the police. Justice for Patrick.
Justice for Patrick.
All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Dan. I'm in the Second Ward. I'm the current spokesperson for the Grand Rapids Democrat and Socialist of America, also known as the DSA. And I also serve as a board member for the Institute for Global Education, or IG for short. I have a statement that I will read first from the IG. "The undersigned board and members of the Institute for Global Education are opposed to the use of police drones in Grand Rapids. Whereas the Grand Rapids Police Department already has an overabundance of resources as they are allocated thirty-eight percent of the city budget, and whereas the Grand Rapids Police Department has yet shown a true and trustworthy accountability to the public service of our citizens in the most just and nonviolent means possible, as shown by extreme reactionary behavior such as the killing of Patrick Leoya by Chris Scher, and overall lack of motivation to change the militant reactionary police culture within the police department, including the use of SWAT team tactics to respond to any incident, overreacting with an extreme behavior and amount of police vehicles and sirens, thereby terrorizing neighborhoods, especially on the southeast side of Grand Rapids. Whereas even though advocates of the use of drones prescribe to many benefits of this new technology, the use of drones by any one person or private or public institution are an absolute and direct threat to personal privacy and security, thereby overloating any benefit. Whereas policies and procedures and regulations are not yet in place for even private use of drones, and many government use of drones are unaccountable to public scrutiny or not yet established to the possible extent of the law. Now I will make this statement that are my own views, but I also try to echo thoughts from other members of the DSA. I am opposed to drones, ShotSpotter, and all the other ideas that have been presented that encourage extra policing and funding for it. Monitoring large-scale events is also, in fact, defined as surveillance. Plain and simple. I also feel like our city manager has been really out of touch with the community, and it's unsettling to hear when people have spoken up here for him to mention all the other people who feel otherwise who weren't here to comment. And to treat Voice for the Badge and other groups like that like they're ten times bigger of an organization than they actually are. This doesn't mean that you, Mark Washington, are a bad person, but I think that your views are out of touch. I spoke with a person who has spoken with you, and they said that you claimed that you used to think similarly to us, but cited that the city of Austin's crime went up after police funding was reduced. I would ask you to consider other contributing factors, such as the election of Donald Trump and his rhetoric and horrific statements and actions against communities of color, the pandemic, and the income inequality that people are continuously suffering through. I will also point out that I think it's unfair that you made $343,000 per year, while the mayor made $60,000, and the commissioners at only $31,000. You made more money than the entire commission put together. And to be the only person who has ultimate control to put items on the agenda means that we as a community are subject to your sole discretion of what is right and wrong.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think that you made a bit statement by encouraging democracy and advocating for more.
Okay, your time's up. Your time's up. Thank you. Your time's up. Thanks. All right, others wish to be heard? Do, do not yell and disrupt this meeting.
It's fine. It's fine. Good evening, commissioners, city clerks, city manager. I'm in the third ward. My name is Vanessa Epps. My concern, and the police chief in particular, is a drone can't talk to me. A drone can't walk with me. Okay, so the safety issue, we, I see is very limited. What I'd like to see happen is the money that you're talking about going to some drones, let's use that money just like the last class that you recruited for the police officers. They were all Caucasian. I'd like to see, and I'll be glad to volunteer, I'd like to offer my services as a resident of this city to assist in recruitment of people that look like me. That's what, I would love to do that. I have a background in corrections and education. We can find some spots, and we can find some people, and I would love to help you do that. But spending money on drones, I think that's a waste of time. So if we're gonna do better, let's, let's, you know, try another route to spend that money. The last, the best chief, because I grew up here, was Chief Hagerty. You know what he did? He came, he came down in our neighborhood and sat with us and ate some barbecue. That's what I'm talking about. When you wanna talk to us, and you wanna work with us, and you wanna be here for us, first you need to get to know us. I know about Chicago, and we're not as metropolitan an area as Chicago, but we're Grand Rapids, and we can do things just a little bit more neighborly if you just give it that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Mark back. This remind me of the days when I was at, when I was in the military. I was involved in a Cuban refugee conflict at Fort Shaffee, Arkansas. There was a lot of military police. They had all kinds of surveillance, including drones. But they came in, but everything was all discombobulated. I remember one time where some military police surrounded a 12-year-old boy, beat the boy, and everything else. Our unit reported it, and then we became the target. And I'm seeing this, I'm seeing this all over again. My problem with this is, who, who is gonna operate these drones? If you have them in the wrong hands, they're gonna do bad things. 'Cause they're gonna treat it like a toy. And something bad will happen to innocent people. Don't want that here, and that's not good. This is why we need the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act. So individuals who will operate these drones, operate them responsibly and the right way. Because if not, we can't have, I can't, I can't, we can't have no corruption here. Can't have it. That's not how policing works. Bad culture trumps policy every single time. You better think about this, because if you have it in the wrong hands, something will happen. Just hold off till the vote until we get everything, and we get the attention to details done, so we get responsible people to operate these, this equipment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, I'm Cindy Hicks, and I live in the first ward, but I'm right on the third ward in the county commission, and live with third ward issues. I went to the beach this last nice day we had, and I saw this sign, so I took a picture of it. It says, "No cars, no bikes, no skates, no drone area, no drones." If you can't see it, it's really big. I think there's a reason they have no drones at the beach, for a reason. Personally, myself, I haven't had the best experiences with the GRPD, even when my daughter was, several little times people tried to kidnap her at the bus stop, because they just stopped giving public education, transportation to kids in the city, so now they have to ride buses with grownups that aren't always safe. I know I have three minutes, so I try to spit every little word out as fast as I can. And the biggest thing that I wanted to say was that when I did call the police and told them about my daughter having an issue with people trying to kidnap her. Melinda Yosasi, could you please pay attention? Thank you, because it involves women and our rights. And the police said if their daughter looked like mine, that they wouldn't let her ride the bus either. So that let me know that, you know, maybe just ugly girls can get kidnapped, I don't know. That didn't sound like the right answer to me. And I don't really know how a drone operated by somebody who just thinks women like my daughter then was 14 or 15, looked hot. That was, that was officers, GRPD, more than one, more than one looked at my child that way. Let's see, I'm a single mom now. I have to remind the new people I don't have a husband or child support because GRPD took that away from me. And they left me with lots of trauma, lots of trauma, lots. It's, you know, I'm still waiting for some funding for help for this trauma that so many of the neighborhood residents have as well, from all the police brutality. I just want to say I do have footage of drones watching me, and my friend is a minister, she's a black minister, and she also was there and took video footage of the drones watching us. So when I have neighbors or friends come in and out of my home, there's already drones watching me and surveying me, and I feel harassed. And I still have pending charges from 2010 tax returns, because I don't keep receipts from 10 years ago. So I still have six criminal charges pending against me because I don't like police surveying me, or my neighbors.
Thank you. Justice for Patrick. All right, others who wish, others who wish to be heard?
I'm Casey Thompson from the third ward, and I'm gonna say no to drones, and I'm gonna play a short audio on why. These are statistics of current-day America. So. I've seen a lot of TikToks lately about people complaining about how hard it is to live in America, and everything's more expensive, and it's a third-world country with a Guji belt, and I just want you to know one thing: You are not crazy, that is fact. We rank 25th in the world for economic freedom, 129th in global peace, the land of the 15th freest, 15th. 17th for quality of life, 20th for gender equality, 18th for healthcare, but we spend more than anybody else. We have the lowest life expectancy for men and women of any country with a high GDP. We rank second to last in childcare quality, 29th in work-life balance, no surprises there. Pay attention, because this is a weird one. The scale for this one says that the number-one country has the highest rate of poverty. What that means is 54 countries have a lower poverty rate than the richest country in the world. We do, however, rank number one in a few places. We are absolutely killing the game in the cost of college. Number one, baby! Scotland tried, but we do have the highest rate of overdoses. And you can always rest assured that you live in the richest country in the world, except that the richest 10% own 70% of the wealth, and the bottom half are fighting over 2.5% of it. What I'm trying to say is if you feel like you're struggling just to survive right now, and this seems like a bunch of bullshit, it's because it is a struggle to survive right now, and it is a bunch of bullshit. Okay, now here's some personal stuff, just for me. Kelsey, last time I came to a city meeting, you got to talking about how behind the stage, behind the scenes, right? There was some talk about some things that really needed change. Did you see Mayor Bliss's face? I did. Why are we, why are we rewarding the police's bad behavior? So if my kid right here does not do her chore, and, and, you know, the dishes are really still filthy, I'm not going to give her dishwash training for more money. I might train her, but right within that same $5 window, you feel me? Because the training's no good, so it's actually out the window with the old training, and then the new replaces. The new is not an addition to, right? Right. If you're having a problem with the police department, and we can't get them to file, to pay for their own liability insurance, and they don't do anything with complaints, like in 2019, there was over 3,000 complaints against GRPD, right? There was three paid suspensions out of that. So if that's not working, just go ahead and sue their insurance company directly, because that's gonna get old to their insurance company, and then they will not be insurable. You guys know you're public servants, right? Not, not celebrities? You, you know that, right? I'll see you in the next three minutes.
Thanks. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, hello, my name is Sheldon. I live here in Grand Rapids. My apologies, I've never been to one of these before, nor have I ever given a public comment, therefore I'm woefully unprepared compared to the people who came before me, but I did just come to reiterate my own opposition towards the investment in police drones. I think there are better uses of those, the city funds than to put them into an institution that has currently not favored public trust, including my own, and into a system that is systemically and historically racist and discriminatory and violent, especially when we do have a very intense mental health crisis, homelessness crisis. We have plenty of city services and civil services that need funding and attentive care to help combat crime. Unfortunately, policing does not solve the issues that we face as a society, in my, in my opinion, and in studies. Policing is not the way that we can help the civil issues that we experience in our day-to-day life. The lack of mental health funding, the lack of social services, the lack of food stability, the, the lack of housing stability is what has curated the climate with which we currently exist, which is not exactly enjoyable for most of us. And I just think that there's a much better use of those funds than to invest in technology and excessive training for surveillance. Surveillance is not policing, for surveillance doesn't prevent crime, it only curates distrust in the public to the servants that are here to supposedly protect us. Like I said, I'm woefully unprepared compared, I just wanted to have my voice heard, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Martha Cooper. I came a couple weeks ago at the, at the meeting, and I made my, my opinion about the police drones known at that time. I know that this is political, that this is public comment, where the rest of the citizenry. I will tell you that for all of us that are here speaking up against it, I want you to be aware that there are plenty more at home that didn't show up tonight. You did not.
All right, let her, do not, do not interrupt speakers.
It's Martha Cooper, and, excuse me, you just interrupted me, I was fine with them. So I was saying, I'd like my time back, that I have my neighbors, I talked with them about it, they were not here tonight, and they didn't like it either. I don't think a whole lot of people are really looking forward to being surveilled when they're doing nothing wrong. I remember a long time ago, before I moved back to Grand Rapids, I was a longtime Grand Rapids kid, and I found myself in Charlotte, and I was thinking Lansing or Grand Rapids. Well, in Lansing at the time, they had helicopters. Cruising around in the summertime, you're out in the backyard, trying to enjoy your, you know, backyard with your friends, and you've got surveillance helicopters. It's not a good thing, and it's not needed. I don't see that this is going to be $100,000 worth of, of crime. And frankly, I'll tell you what I've seen with the police here, okay? I've seen the police in 2019, I was a volunteer with COSA, and the march on May 1st was going on, and it's a celebration of the workers for dignity and respect. And it's also, at the time, we were also asking for driver's licenses for all, which many other states have done, but our bigoted state has not showed up behind that yet, and that is just, that is just safety sense. So when, and getting back to the drones, is that I will never trust the police. Like I saw the pressure and the intimidation of bikes on cops, cops on bikes. They were just swarming, there was, it was bully time, and it was not to, to provide safety for the workers that were marching, it was to provide intimidation. And people like that do not need to be having drones, because most of us are pretty damn intimidated by our police. I'm a white woman, and I don't have it like, like I would if I were a black person in this community. I've seen a lot of things in this community against black people, and I would not want them to have drones. I've seen them put their hands on protesters, and this, it's supposed to be legal, and instead I saw people that I cared about being thrown down onto the pavement and could have had broken bones, thrown in jail, and then had the courts jump in too, to intimidate protesters.
Thank you, Martha. Your time's up, your time's up.
Hello, my name is Emma. I pay taxes in Grand Rapids. You probably know already where I live, because I feel that I'm watched. So I'm here for no for drones, for the police department, and I will talk about why and the facial recognition, which is racial profiling. So I don't trust the cops, the police, because as a member of the immigrant community, some of my members had been killed, and also by the police, and also separated from their families. And Captain Van der Kooi, racial profiling and facial recognition, that person that end up in detention center, and Hilmar was born in Grand Rapids. So utilizing the language of the police chief on tools, I remember when the police department was asking for assault weapons or rifles for their, their cars, and they, they use the term "tools." So this tool for the police department that they're trying to get is morally to civilians and to racial profiling people like myself, and, and ending up with examples of what I've gone through. My, my friend works third shift, young couple, and her part, his partner works first shift, so they have a three, three-year-old son, and the three-year-old son walked out the house because the parent was, my friend was sleeping, working for third shift. So the three-year, the three-year-old went to the street, and the neighbor found him and brought him back home. So I think that this money could be used, utilized for more childcare, for more affordable childcare, since this parents worked to make ends meet with low wage, so better wage, housing, and other, better use of this funding than tools for the police department.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Brandon's second ward. I am very honored to speak after Hema and after so many great activists who provided very expert opinions on the real threat to many of the activists and people who are rooting democracy here in Grand Rapids, and responding to what is appostured by the city that is corporate, that is elitist, and that is tone deaf to the needs of our community. And it is so sad that, uh, that the posturing is so. Most of the police don't even live in the area where they are policing. And instead of offering hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to restorative justice practices and policing that is proactive and responds to what has been communicated time and again as the reality of social science. The science is that this narrative of control, of punitive policing, where they surveil and have control by power and might, that that prevents, it does not. I live in this community, and the policing is terrible right now. There are fights on the streets, at the rapid, at MLK Park. My friends, their, their daughter got dragged through the glass, okay? Just a couple weeks ago. And the detective said, well, we can't make out the faces in the hundreds of videos from all these young kids, but we can't make out their faces, so we're not gonna do anything about it. So if they're not using that footage to do quality police work, what are they gonna do with drone footage? Most likely, they're gonna surveil the most powerful and potent activists in this city. And what has the police chief said in response? What has he said to take care for this narrative and all these concerns? You give him expert level pay and prestige and privilege to come in here and speak at an unlimited amount of time, but no one to give the counter-narrative. You don't pay anyone for the counter-narrative. And so what do you do, paying our leader? More than all of you combined, you are puppets on a string, and the string is dismally small. It's pathetically small. This is not democracy, this is not decorum, it's a pathetic excuse. And people are dying at your hands, Mark Washington. Patrick Leoya, how often do you think about him, Mark Washington? How often do you talk to his family? And I wonder what Christopher Sher is doing today? Maybe going to Starbucks after murdering someone in our city? Talking with his cop buddies, you are virtue signaling with this, and you know what you do. You virtue signal surveillance, control, while the voiceless suffer. They don't have your money. They don't have your power. But thank God for the democratic possibility of these three beautiful minutes of possibility.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, I'm Libby, I live in the second ward, East Town. I say that just because it happens to be on the southeast side of town, and I think most of the second ward is on the northeast side, so I just kinda wanna put that in there. One of the things that um, I had caught when I was watching the first presentation about drones was, um, one of the reasons behind it was for traffic accident reconstruction. And I had wanted to see if anybody was going, I even came before this group and asked if any numbers would be provided to us as a community to prove that we needed drones for that, because my experience in the city has been the police don't come out to car accidents. Um, you have to drive downtown, find a parking spot, walk a couple blocks, go inside, hope that there's somebody there that will take a report. So I'm not really sure why having drones to do traffic accidents is something that Grand Rapids, Grand Rapids police need. Again, the only time I've had the police come to an accident was when I hit an undercover police officer. So, um, and it was six police officers that showed up to that, so. Anyways, a couple other things that have caught my eye too. Well, I, I saw a presentation online that was using a lot of the same slides that the chief used right now, but there was also like using traffic reconstruction for accidents on the highway, and I'm pretty sure Michigan State Police does that, not Grand Rapids Police. That was another, um, kinda interesting use of reasoning for drones. Um, the idea that OPA would have access to these, I don't know, is that really true? I, my understanding is OPA has to kinda fight to get the data that they get from the Grand Rapids Police Department. So is this something else that would have to be requested and wait for somebody on the department to grant that request to OPA? Is it really something that they would have free and open access to? They wouldn't need to get somebody who's in charge of data to give them that information? And then the other thing that I had wanted to know about was, it's all well and good to create policy, um, but police chiefs change, and then another chief might wanna have a different policy. Um, what would be the consequences of a police officer using drone data for, you know, the powers of bad or evil? We know that it is very difficult to fire police officers when they do things that are against policy, and I, I would like to know if that could be included in their contract. You invade people's privacy, you're out. We don't need to have, you know, well, I know, I know. And that's one of the things, we don't have consequences for police, and we're giving them. It's, it's not what I can imagine police doing with the drone footage. It's what I can't imagine them doing with it, that kinda frightens me a little bit.
All right, thanks, thanks, Libby.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard? All right, and other, it's, go ahead.
Ross Lynn Bliss, I hear you giving the audience, um, demands like, stop talking over people, stop interrupting, but I haven't once heard you say that Christopher Sher was wrong for killing Patrick Leoya. I haven't heard you speak on that, not once, not one time. Also, it's unfair that your guys are having this meeting about what the community wants, yes or no to the drones. I don't, I don't believe in drones, but people who are not able to get here are not able to be heard. And that's something that you keep saying, if, if you, you want your voice to be heard, Ross Lynn, Ross Lynn, I'm talking to you. If you want your voice to be heard, right? So I don't see why people who may not be able to leave their home are not able to have their voice be heard on this, you get what I'm saying? And then people come out here using time and gas money, and y'all, not all of y'all, some of y'all look, but some of y'all don't. Melinda, you don't look, and I heard someone at, tell you directly to please look at them, and you, you don't look. So that's disrespectful, when people coming out here. People taking their time, gas money, we, we not getting paid what y'all getting paid. That's not okay. And for this to even be a question, yes or no to the drones, y'all done lost y'all minds, because everybody been saying defund GRPD. Everyone been, been saying the police don't make us feel safe. So would you want a camera in your face? Would you want a camera in yours? No, y'all wouldn't, and the cameras not even gonna be in y'all face. If it was, if it was that, if the drones get approved, it's not gonna be in y'all face. It's gonna be in black people's face, poor people's face, unhoused people's face, and that is not okay, it's not okay. And I'm getting very overwhelmed and frustrated to have to keep saying the same thing. You guys were elected by the people to listen to the people, to listen to the people and to execute the ideas of the people. Not just the people with money, not just the white people, but everybody. And I hear people that do not have as much money, people who are oppressed, black people, Hispanic people, Asian people, I'm hearing everybody be ignored. Be ignored over and over and over again. Patrick Leoya was killed by an officer that works at GRPD, and y'all trying to get him more stuff, it don't make sense, like y'all haven't been hearing us. And I find that personally disrespectful, when I take time out of my day to come over here and tell y'all how I feel.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Uh, my name is Mindy, from the second ward. I also feel like this public hearing is staged, you're gonna do what you're gonna do, right? I am opposed to the police drones, obviously, but I will say one thing I appreciate about what it is we all know you're gonna do here, and the police drones, is that um, all the lawyers in the room can relate. The police drones is only strengthening our case for defund the police. People are waking up, um, like a fellow comrade had came up here and said already, there are thousands of people who don't believe in coming into these rooms, who feel like they need to band together and um, move forward with defunding the police. And I appreciate things like drones, new toys, um, the hundreds of thousands of dollars going to ten new police officers and drones, when there hasn't been not one single dollar allocated towards building or rebuilding trust between GRPD and the community, community in the last year. And I'm gonna leave it there, because Mark sat through my whole speech, so I win.
All right, others, others wish to be heard?
Okay, um, the American Bar Association continues to publish letters on how privacy law in America is lagging very far behind technology. In this particular letter, I've got some statistics on how the FBI continues to use national security letters, which were permitted under the USA Patriot Act, to um, get around the Foreign Intelligence and Surveillance Act of 1978, which Congress enacted in response to the executive branch being found guilty of um, surveilling members of Congress and journalists and activists under the pretense of national security. So then we got the USA Patriot Act in 2006, I think it was 2006, um, and that allowed the FBI to start using um, national security letters to get around what the FISA had instated, in an attempt to curtail, you know, government abuse of power in regards to surveilling citizens and attaining information in regards to anything that would become a legal issue. The code that the GRPD shared had a, uh, part of the code that said that the drone operators can deviate from the scope of purview that they were meant to operate under, if they feel like deviating will allow them to prevent a crime. And therein lies the loophole that pretty much allows the GRPD to uh, have carp lunch over surveilling whoever they want, whenever they want, as long as they can come up with a sufficient excuse. And considering that we have a police union that wants to stand behind an officer that shot a man that was pinned to the ground, uh, we can imagine they would come up with those excuses. So, uh, the other thing I noticed that was missing out of um, the commissioner's presentation was the statistics that I had commented on, on the, in the previous meeting, wherein it was shown that giving the police departments drones didn't improve their outcomes. It didn't change their outcomes. It did reduce the time that they arrived at those outcomes by about 30 minutes to a couple of hours, but you won't be giving the citizens of Grand Rapids better policing by giving the police department better drones. You will be ensuring them that their privacy and their rights will be infringed upon, most definitely, by giving the police department drones, because we know that the police department has the permission to do that based on their own code that you guys are willing to, I imagine, in a few moments, vote to approve. And they will make up whatever excuses they want to make sure that that code is, is abided to in whatever way they care to. So if you would like to declare war on the citizens of Grand Rapids, give the city of Grand Rapids Police Department drones.
Others wish to be heard?
I'm Pat Sizik, from the northwest side of Grand Rapids, and I am voting for the drones. I would love to have them. Uh, I do feel they save people, they do save our children, they do, are used properly. I have been through uh, programs where they showed everything they used these drones for, and they have never been used for anything wrong. I've been through Kent County training, I've been through different training, and I think they're wonderful, they're an asset to our community to help protect all of us. I'm a senior citizen, I'm older than dirt, and I would love to have them keep track of me. I have been walking down the street, and I have been challenged by people of gentlemen, men, that are after money, that have threatened me. And I love our police officers, I'm glad they come when I call, and I'm so glad that we have each one of them. And Officer Sher did a great job of taking a monster off our street. They can mention that other, and I wanna tell them, our police officers are great.
All right, okay, all right. Others who, are others who, others who wish to be heard, others who wish to be heard? All right, Lucas, sit down, Lucas, sit down. You know what? I'm gonna close this public hearing, I'm gonna close the public hearing. All right, we're gonna close this.
Can I say something?
Yes, you can, sir.
I've never been here, my name is Art.
Lucas, stop interrupting.
It's okay, it's okay.
Stop, Lucas, stop. You are disrupting this meeting, I'm gonna ask you to leave if you do not stop, disrupting this meeting, let him speak.
We're good. My name is Art, I live in Grand Rapids. I'm a United States Marine. I'm gonna say one thing about drones, I know what we use them for, search and destroy, period. You can weaponize a drone in less than 20 minutes, what's to say they're not? I'm not gonna say they are, I'm not gonna say they don't. I didn't know nothing about this until tonight. This is my first night stepping in here, and I'm the first person to say drones are a bad idea for our police department. The military use them, we use them to destroy the enemy. We're not the enemy, we're your damn citizens, that's it.
Thank you, Art. All right, DeAndre, I'm gonna.
How you doing, everybody? I appreciate the kind tunes, I don't go to church though. But um, can I get my time?
Yeah, hold on.
All right, all right, all right, thank you, I got patience. How you doing, everybody? I'm Dee Jones, stay in the first ward. So first of all, I'd like to say I got selected to be one of the reviewers of the Kaplan Prize. And that's 10 projects that's transformational, I get to oversee 10 projects.
DeAndre, what, what are you speaking about right now, are you speaking about drones?
Uh, this is, hold on, what is this?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm actually gonna, I'm actually gonna close this public hearing, because we have two more scheduled public hearings.
This ain't, this ain't public comment?
There's one more disruption, disruption, I am closing this public hearing and moving to the next one. Brandon, do not yell from the back of the room, I'm serious. Brandon? He, you shouldn't be yelling from the audience, it's actually not allowed. It's considered disruption. So there.
All right, I'm gonna pass, I'm gonna let them speak.
DeAndre, thank you, I, I am gonna close this public hearing. I, I am serious, I am serious. I have, I have. Okay, I'm gonna recess, because we have. Okay, I'm gonna recess. Commissioners, we're gonna recess, we have two more scheduled public hearings tonight.
Why is she not gone?
Okay, I'm gonna recess because we have, okay, I'm gonna recess, commissioners, we're gonna recess, we have two more scheduled public hearings tonight.
Why is she not gone?
...team, so they've been out since about early October, engaging with residents, kind of hearing their needs and continuing to work on the resident needs in downtown. Additionally, throughout the engagement with residents, a whole bunch of other things were identified as resident priorities throughout downtown, things like enhanced lighting, fresh food access in the downtown. While not outlined in the Improvement District Plan, our staff at Downtown Grand Rapids Inc. continues to work on some of these priorities that the neighbors have brought up and continue to advance them forward. Quick overview of engagement and how we talk to folks about the Downtown Improvement District. So, we conduct a survey of all the businesses, property owners and residents, gather their feedback about services being provided, and try to understand all of those different stakeholder groups' priorities, and then hold a lot of in-person meetings with Plaza Towers, Rivers House, et cetera, and then a whole lot of one-on-one meetings with residents and other stakeholders throughout downtown. Want to highlight just sort of four key things in the Improvement District Plan. So, the first is increasing the area-wide assessment by 5%. This is strictly to keep up with the increasing costs of providing maintenance and operations in the downtown. The second is to continue the DID services through 2026. This is the first time we've saw a multi-year authorization since 2019. Each year has been a single authorization. In the budgeting process for this plan to take us through 26, we've proposed to tie future increases to local CPI capped at 4%, which is outlined in our three-year budget, which is how the city also does its budgeting process. And then we're proposing across those three years, no changes to the residential assessment, keeping it flat at $120 per parcel. This is just simply a schedule that we are on right now to move through the public hearing process and get assessments out by August 1st. And that's it.
Yeah, with that, we're happy to take any questions.
Okay, thanks. Commissioners, any questions or comments for either Melvin or Tim? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, if you are here tonight to be heard on this public hearing, again, it's for the Downtown Improvement District, you're welcome to come forward. Again, we ask you to share your name, the city that you live in. You can come in up here, sir. The city that you live in, and we'll give you up to three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Mike Joyce. I live at 335 Bridge Street, that's in Grand Rapids, just right over here. I'm in the area that they're talking about that they want to pass this assessment for. And there's a couple of things I want to ask about before we get any further. Number one, the assessment is a property tax. You have to own property to be assessed this assessment, and it's an assessment. If the city assesses something on us, it's a tax. We have a law, a constitutional law in the state of Michigan, that any new property taxes have to have a vote. Why is this not included in this? That's not my dog to fight, because that's all what lawyers can all talk about. What I want to talk to you about is it's something that I'm responsible for. I live there. A large part of the budget of the DGRI for maintenance and everything is for snow removal. They remove no snow in front of my house. They say they do all the cleaning that they want to do, picking up all the cigarette butts. There's no smokers that I am aware of that we sit there and throw cigarette butts on the ground that we have to be picked up. I don't think that this particular taxes that they're talking about is being justifiably correct for all of us. Not only do I get stuff from this, you get stuff from it also. It's something that everybody gains from the city of Grand Rapids. I like DGRI. They have increased probably the value of my building dramatically. But at the same sense, I pay property tax, and every year I pay an additional 5% property tax because it maxes out, and I've been there for 10 years. That is supposed to be the total amount of taxes that are supposed to be paid as far as the Constitution of the United, of the state of Michigan has. To give you a more concept there, is the areas that they have on their website that they are concerned about, and I don't see where I belong to any of it. Supporting the construction of optical Grand Rapids greenways. I should, I should, yes, be part of it, but you should also pay for that. I don't think I should be pulled out for it. Supporting the construction of enhanced public spaces. Public spaces for me, I have public spaces. Construction of a second 24/7 fully accessible downtown public restroom. I got a public restroom, for me, at my house, I live downtown. I don't need one out there.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, others wish to be heard on this item. Again, it's the Downtown Improvement District.
Hi, my name is Leslie. I live on the Second Ward. I just wanted to say that I'm very excited to hear that there's going to be a public restroom downtown that's going to be accessible to everybody. It's been a huge need. I'm excited that we're going to meet that need. I think there's lots of opportunities to keep doing things like this and keep helping people that live downtown that don't provide the capital that we're always looking for, but are still humans that deserve care, even if they're struggling and regardless of whose fault that is. So, uh...
Thanks.
And thank you for making this positive change.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good evening, greetings to the commission, and thank you for your work for our city. My name is Patricia Gardner, and I live in Hartside for the last six years. And I would say, by and large, my husband and I are great fans of the ambassadors. We see them daily, greet them, and know them by name, and have appreciated the times when they have shoveled my sidewalk. But one of the goals of this program is public safety, and I just wanted to suggest that the downtown ambassadors consider non-traditional work hours, so that they don't stop work at 5:00 and consider working into the evening, and that they form some closer relationship with law enforcement. So, as issues arise in the city, they could be another voice to law enforcement in addition to citizens. As issues in the downtown area arise with drug trafficking, human trafficking, or other activities that are problematic to enjoying a vibrant downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge Gardner. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, Brandon, Second Ward. I would like to also celebrate finally better 24-hour bathroom services, especially since the pandemic. That's been a real big difficulty, the fact that so many people downtown, you don't even have to like be homeless to struggle to sometimes find a place to go to the bathroom. It's like, I only had enough for that cup of coffee, and I already left the coffee shop. Oh, shoot, where do I go? And the bathrooms close pretty early. But deeper than this, how we as a city spend services downtown, it attracts commerce, and that is our focus, but how do we make this amenable, especially when on both sides of the political spectrum, you're being asked for solutions? I'm curious afterwards, how are we calling on wider bodies? How are we expanding to include this $20 million development annual budget to stabilize and leverage partnerships to truly solve these issues? A lot of our economic development is, is big budget, it's a big dollar. There is truly abundance in Grand Rapids, so I'm wondering why it's such a struggle to help the people who are struggling so much? I mean, Meyer alone made over $1 billion during the pandemic. So, maybe we can think about increases in taxes on the very wealthy who don't worry about these issues whatsoever. And the development corridor, an enhanced study that would be great. I would love to see a study like this done for the Third Ward, where we have a blatantly structurally racist situation where the vast majority of BIPOC individuals are located. That's where most of the lead poisoning has been taking place, where a lot of the structural violence has been centered, making us the poster child for really white supremacist structural violence, for not just Grand Rapids or Michigan, but really, it's a, it's a pretty great national model with how much we just purely cater to corporate interests and leave our citizens of actual Grand Rapids to suffer, with all the people who make decisions but don't even live here. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item? All right, I'm going to close that scheduled public hearing, and that will be referred back to our committee of the whole. All right, this will take us to our last opportunity for public comment tonight, and you can come up and speak on any other issue.
Casey from the Third Ward again. So, "A Glimpse of Africa" hosted a community event, and you all clapped in attendance for Donnie as he won Activist of the Year. It was, you know that was for the same charges that you arrested and convicted him for, right? Right, Sher? Washington, you swore up and down, our, our city doesn't have bad water, we don't have any water issues at all. Is that why my water line just got replaced? Brandon Davis from the OPA doesn't want to serve us. He wants to be a judge in Muskegon, but he lost. But it's fine, because we can refer to him for our safety from the drones. Why is it always, we want to engage with the community and hear your concerns, and never, we've heard your concerns, and are implementing systemic change, and here's our implementation plan, so you can hold, so you can hold us accountable? Healthy societies don't indefinitely detain whistleblowers. Capitalism, imperialism, liberalism, genocide, racism, eugenics, environmental destruction, these are just components of European colonism. European colonism has been the primary contradiction of Earth for the past 500 years. I'm anti-colonial first, socialist second. We pay Anita six grand a week to prosecute protesters, blow kisses at us, and look more bored than you've ever looked in your life. BIPOC and systemic seats gives house slave, and house slaves are still slaves. So, I, there was a poll over on Madison, near where I live, and I stopped, and I started to record, and the police officer came to my car, and she said, "Why are you recording? It's not escalated." And I said, "Ma'am, I'm not recording for escalation. I'm recording because you're calling yourselves underfunded, but there's eight police officers, and six, six or seven of them are in a circle talking about, ha, ha, for dinner tonight, my daughter's soccer game." And, and just the one person is actually engaging with the person. You're right, there's little kids with balloons, happy, happy birthday balloons in the backseat. And so, do you see how this, this is an unnecessary use of power? Too much, right? It's too much. But it's the southeast side, and the lady was black, so you never know, right? Calling all forces, kind of like now when you just seen Patricia came up here, the white, the old white lady, and got to say, "Bitch," to everyone, and that was totally fine, right? But then the brown lady stood up and was like, "Ooh, she said that. Guess who was escorted out? Guess who's still sitting here?" We stopped coming because like nothing happens of it, but it makes you too comfortable. It makes it so that when we come back, we give little smirks and little, and so, "See you again next week, and the week after that, and the week after that." I got six seconds, calm down. Justice for Patrick Leoya.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Nalisha from Grand Rapids, but I live in Wyoming. I'm tired, I literally came here after work. Homeless lives matter, and I'm going to say that every single time I come. Thank you Mayor Bliss for having a meeting with me this month, I really appreciate it. We always find money for the police, which I don't trust as far as I can throw them, because I had two teenage brothers who were physically assaulted by GRPD for no reason. But there's not enough money being allocated for homelessness. I have had enough, because I've spoken at three meetings so far. And as a mother, I shouldn't have been separated from my daughter, and I'm going to fight the starvation army, and now I'm going to talk about community rebuilders. When I sought assistance when I was homeless, I was told that I would have to get a referral through the Salvation Army. But I had a close family member who fell on hard times months after I lost my apartment. They were able to go directly to community rebuilders and get help. I was that mail trotter, which I like to call hell trotter, because it was a living hell being there, period. I was living with a mother and daughter, they were able to, I referred them to community rebuilders, they were able to segue from hell trotter to the Housing Connection Center to an apartment. But I was always told that I would have to get a referral, so we need an organization where oversight and accountability can take place for these so-called nonprofit organizations that have millions of dollars in assets. Y'all know that I've already spoken out against the Salvation Army, and they have $11.3 billion in assets. You have a lot of homeless people here in Kent County. The last time I checked, there was over 10,000 people in Kent County that are homeless. Who gets held accountable for the act of discrimination that like Vera Beach and her sister Vicki Squires from Community Rebuilders engage in? The fact that I've never lost or relinquished my parental rights, and I haven't seen my daughter in May in four years, because I had to send her to another city, and I'm going to keep talking about it until somebody gets held accountable, because I shouldn't have had to separate from my child. Community rebuilders kept telling me that I would have to get a referral. I followed, I followed the chain of command from the top to the bottom, all the way to the president, and nobody wants to acknowledge the discrimination that I face from the starvation army and community rebuilders. And the last time I was here, there's somebody in the audience who felt the need to smirk about my pain, nothing that I've gone through is funny, because that person wouldn't have been, they wouldn't be able to hack it, they would fold like these chairs up in here. These so-called nonprofits need to be held accountable, because there's a lot of people like me falling through the cracks. I have a job, and I've had jobs when I was homeless. I had a job for almost a year during the height of the pandemic, and I can't get an apartment in my own hometown because of gentrification, three and four times the rent. Studio apartments for $1,500, they are catering to rich white people.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Let's start talking just to mess with you, Joel, because you can't press the button yet. Hey, I'm Lucas, First Ward. Boom, three extra seconds. I want to talk about a different city tonight. I want to talk about pity city. Yeah, pity city. It's the place that Miller &amp; Noel CEO Andy Owen says that folks are living in when they question their failing company's fate and their bonuses that hang in the balance. A lot of you probably got elected with the help of money from Owen and other rich and powerful types. You might not like me speaking out against them, but that really says more about you than it does about me. For Andy Owen, who herself collects millions and millions of dollars in pay and bonuses, people working for about 40K a year, depending on small boosts and take-home pay, are just whiners, takers, people who need to lift themselves out of pity city and work harder. Never mind the overpriced product, never mind the lack of demand as offices sit empty, while her marketing and sales teams try their damnedest to do everything they can, she sees fit to berate them in a rant heard around the world and an embarrassment to our city and our state in the process. Owen could do the honorable thing as a leader, she could take a pay cut, she could redirect her own bonus to stipend her employees through this painful market adjustment, but no. She railed at them, and then leaned on some of the same employees to craft an impersonal and canned apology of flimsy damage control effort. What she should do is make a personal, live, public appearance and be genuine. She should shed her tone-deaf focus on greed and denigrating workers to truly understand her misdeeds. She could do this as an example to so many other rich, callous, out-of-touch West Michigan figureheads. But that would mean having hard conversations that West Michigan nice forbids. Posting limp-wristed support for progressive legislation online is more the kind of phoned-in social responsibility those types prefer. Owen's an example of what's wrong with our city and our nation as a whole. Singular people with ungodly fortunes amassed on the backs of workers chastising those workers instead of joining hands with them, people so wealthy they could write one check and solve the issue of homelessness in this town, looking down from their ivory towers on all of us common folk in pity city. We have to stop accepting the abusive construct, and we have to speak out against it, and the board at Miller &amp; Noel is to find a new CEO who will be humble and repair the deep damage to their image and the stain that it has put on this community.
Y'all know who Owen was, right?
All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, Dan again, Second Ward. I'm here to speak on maybe a little bit less controversial issue, except it wasn't really controversial, because it was like 30 to 1 who were against drones. But I'm going to mention a ballot initiative that's being done in the city for ranked choice voting. For those who are unaware of what ranked choice voting is, it's a system where, instead of the winner-take-all system that we currently have, one can vote for multiple candidates and rank them in order like you would your favorite food. So far, in Michigan, Ann Arbor and Ferndale have passed it, and in Grand Rapids, Kalamazoo, Lansing, East Lansing, Royal Oak, efforts are currently being done. And Alaska and Maine currently use ranked choice voting for both their statewide and presidential elections. And if anybody has any questions, I have a, you know, I'm collecting signatures. We need about 8,500 in the city to get it on the ballot, so I will be over by the door if anybody would like to sign that. You have to be a city resident, and if anybody is not here and watching on Facebook Live, YouTube, public access, any other means, we will also be tabling at events such as Rock the Block and Pride Fest, and we are out collecting signatures often at venues outside the farmer's market in Nantucket and other places like that. So, encourage anybody who may be in support, and if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. We have, there's a statewide website at rankmyvote.org. That's R-A-N-K-M-I-V-O-T-E.org, and there's a section for Grand Rapids on there, and there's also a Facebook page. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Crystal. I will be interpreting for Emiliana today. Everything that is said will be interpreted. Please speak to each other, not to me. Hola, mi nombre es Cristal. Yo voy a ser la intérprete de Emiliana al día de hoy. Por favor de hablar entre ustedes y no directamente conmigo. Todo lo que se ha dicho será interpretado.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Emiliana, y vivo en Burton Heights.
Good evening, my name is Emiliana, and I live in Burton Heights.
Gracias por la oportunidad que tengo, aunque tuve que esperar muchísimo tiempo.
Thank you for the opportunity, even though I had to wait a very long time.
Tengo una preocupación que seguramente muchos también lo tienen.
I have a concern that I'm pretty sure a lot of people are concerned over this as well.
Es acerca de los transeúntes, las personas que caminan, y los ciclistas.
It is in regards of people that walk through our city and bike cyclists.
Conozco, y seguramente ustedes conocen, personas que van a su trabajo, que van a estudiar, y usan, o caminan, o usan bicicleta.
I know of a couple people, and I'm sure you guys know of a couple people as well, that go to work daily walking or either using their bike.
La verdad es no sé a quién dirigirme a la ciudad o a la policía para saber qué es lo que están haciendo para proteger.
I am honestly not sure who I am supposed to direct this to, if, to the city or the police, but I would like to know what they are doing regarding this matter.
Poner prevención, y luego ver los resultados pero pronto.
To put prevention and then see results, but soon.
Especialmente porque ahora vamos a entrar en vacaciones por los chicos que usan bicicleta, y también normalmente todo el año la gente trabaja.
Especially because now we will be entering summer vacation, and there will be kids riding their bikes, and just for anyone that rides their bike every day to work.
Esta tarde leí en un periódico del accidente de una persona que fue atropellada, un ciclista que fue atropellado y falleció. Y entonces esa es mi preocupación, que pronto viene las vacaciones y hay mucho movimiento.
This evening, I saw a news article about a person who was riding their bike, a bicyclist, that got ran over and passed away.
Me gustaría que, bueno, como mamá y como abuela, porque pienso en el futuro de los, de las personas, y también de personas que trabajan, porque he visto, vivo en una calle transitada, y veo gente que va con bicicleta, con motocicleta, y va a su trabajo.
I would like, as a mother and as a grandma, as I think of the future and of people doing this daily, I would like to know what is going to be done regarding this matter.
Ese es lo principal que me gustaría que, a lo mejor ya lo están haciendo, no sé qué tanto están haciendo, pero me preocupa.
That is what I'm mainly worried about. Maybe you guys are already working on this, but this is my main concern.
Gracias por la oportunidad.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Asanti, are you following up? Okay, thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Grace, First Ward. Previously lived in the Third Ward. I'm here to speak on pedestrian and cyclist safety. I had a cyclist friend who, two weeks ago, was run over by a car in downtown Grand Rapids, seriously injured, went to the ER. It was a hit-and-run, most likely. We want people to come to our city, we want people to not just drive in cars, we want people to cycle, we want people to walk safely. We have wonderful scooters and other motorized vehicles that allow people to go around our Safety is of a concern. The previous speaker spoke about someone not too long ago, also in that same downtown area, being killed while cycling by a car, by a vehicle. That's not acceptable for a city that is trying to encourage people to do more than just ride their vehicles in the city. It is a very walkable city, especially downtown. My request to the city manager is, what kind of plan are we going to put in place to address this very serious issue? You want to walk downtown, you want your children to walk downtown and cycle and not be fearful of that someone's going to run a red light or a stop sign, because they're too busy trying to get to the place they needed to go. It's not something that we think about often, because we think we're going to be safe walking down the sidewalk or cycling downtown to go to work, to go to a movie. That's what we assume, that we're going to be safe. And when we're not, we think, well, what is the, what is the problem? What is the issue? We need to have cameras installed, speed cameras, and if we can't have speed cameras to capture people that are violating the law by running a stoplight, we need to have cameras so that they can at least capture who, who they are, to, to put consequences to people that seriously harm or kill pedestrians or people that are cycling downtown, residents and tourists of Grand Rapids. It's unacceptable that we don't have a plan right now. I think it's a simple... I think it's a simple petition. I ask our city manager to make a plan of action. It's a call to action. Please make a plan for safety for pedestrians and cyclists of all ages. I'm sure you all want to be safe walking down in the city of Grand Rapids downtown every day. I wish safety for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
I couldn't have been that loud. I don't think I'd ever really be that loud during the city commission. It's crazy. How you doing, everybody? My name is Dee Jones and I got a couple of things I want to say. Have you ever heard of a VPN? We always talk about privacy and people getting their privacy invaded and stuff, but I'm pretty sure a lot of you don't have a VPN. I'm pretty sure you guys don't know what a virtual privacy network is. If anybody that's in this room, if you don't have a virtual privacy network, anybody can hack into your files. Anybody can hack into anything that you get into, your Facebook, everything. And we talking about privacy. The federal government can get into these politicians' stuff if they wanted to, these police officers, everybody, my stuff. Just for example, I hate to be so explicit, but if I was watching XXX videos or something, they can look and see that and they can put it out there. So I just want you all to actually think about these things. Everybody's not, every life is not so private. The government can always look into your stuff. Look it up, a VPN. Thank you, but I just wanted to say, you know, I just wanted to educate you all on that. But yeah, man, I'm happy. I got chose to look over the Kaplan Prize, so I'll be able to look over 10 transformational projects that get $150,000 apiece, me, Dee Jones. And they get $25,000 in technical support. That's crazy. The participatory budgeting process trained me for those same opportunities because I'm doing the same work, except for I'm working with projects across the United States and globally. That's what I'm doing nowadays and I'm changing my community. I just did an esports competition. At a university educating the underserved community, parents, young kids. Had McDonald's there. They were giving out coupons, free food, swag. Had Red Bull there. They couldn't be there, but they still gave me product and I got to give that to the community. We got to play esports. I got NBA 2K donated directly from the NBA. I had a gaming studio there. I got a sponsorship from a bank, a financial institution to educate the community, the underserved, black communities, the second worst city for economic development. I've done a lot of powerful things. I did it by myself. I went out and hustled $7,000 by myself. I didn't ask nobody on Facebook for a thing and I did it. I did it and I changed my community and I had the Kent County Sheriff's Department watching people from the hood play NBA 2K. They was really from the hood, from the trenches. Come from poor, piss poverty. And I created opportunities. I gave away thousands. People got thousands of dollars at my event. I gave away thousands and I can't wait to do the next one. We're going to do Call of Duty the next time. I'd like to see the police department there next time if you guys can. But thank you for all the political figures from the state level, city level, county level, every single person that came to my event because I worked hard to change the community and I really created economic change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, others wish to be heard?
Mark back again. I want to go say something different, but because of these interruptions, I'm going to have to go there. This is ridiculous. That was a ridiculous display from one individual who comes in and basically just started all kinds of commotion. Was led up to the chaos that we had a few minutes ago. Not good. And if you continue to instill that type of behavior and not kick people out, you're biased. Cannot be biased at all. And if this individual don't like it, like what I had to say, go home and watch reruns of Dragnet. Now I'm going to talk about Mark Robinson, who's trying to run for governor of North Carolina. What in the hell are you doing? You saying that black people don't deserve no reparations, they owe reparations? You are a fool. You are a plantation negro. That's who you are. You please the white people, but you can't fool me. So you better get your act right. I don't care, you are a Republican. You get your act right. That's all I'm going to say about that. Remove J. Edgar Hoover's name from the FBI building. Remove George Wallace's name from the town of Mobile, Alabama. Justice for Patrick Leoya. Recall Ron DeSantis. Kick Clarence Thomas off of the Supreme Court. And still boycott Swanson. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, I'm Libby Still. First, I want to apologize for anything that I had to do with the commotion back there. I'm a firm believer in taking responsibility for your own actions and I can only control myself, not anybody else. So again, I apologize to anybody up here that might have taken offense and I apologize to some people in the back of the room. I wanted to talk actually a little bit about the public, it's getting late, the meeting that you had this afternoon, the public relation, not public relations. Somebody help me think of the word.
Public safety.
Thank you, public safety meeting. I thought you guys had a really good conversation in that public safety meeting. I really appreciated what I heard. I hope that that is a starting point for the city, or probably not a starting point. You're obviously some way into that process, but I really did appreciate that conversation. A couple of things I wanted to ask about, if at some point they could be addressed, that would be lovely. I heard about private security in our parks. Does that include armed security? Would they be armed? And who are they answerable to? I mean, just, you know, I don't need the answers now, but there's some questions that came up when I was listening to you guys earlier. And another thing I wanted to mention was the idea that the hot team has been so successful and perhaps one of the reasons it's been so successful is because it's a really well-funded department with people that have very good benefits and job security. And we don't see that in a lot of other places in the city of Grand Rapids. I always think about how it would be great if there was, I can't believe I'm saying this, a city-controlled organization that was the central clearinghouse for all the nonprofits because we have so many nonprofits in the city and their mission changes from year to year depending on who the CEO is at that time. And this is something that municipalities do well, you know? They can pay well, they can recruit people sometimes easily or more easy than a nonprofit that's going to pay $13 an hour and not give any benefits. So I thought maybe that would be something I could throw out there. But again, I really want to thank you guys for that conversation earlier today.
Thanks, Libby. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello again, thank you for your time. I know a big idea and push for Grand Rapids, the city in general and the country, I suppose, is to have a better connection between the police and the community for lots of obvious reasons. And that makes sense to me, like it needs to improve and I just don't see it being possible with adding drones. I totally get like, for sure it would be really good, search and rescue, like love that. But I don't quite understand why the drones have to go to, obviously you call 911, the police are there, but I'm not quite sure why the drones need to be in direct control like by the police department. There's lots of other organizations, search and rescue, the fire department. I understand the Grand Rapids Fire Department has drones. That makes a lot of sense. And I want there to be better relations in this city and I just don't see it being possible if we go forward with this drone idea. I totally understand why it was proposed. I'm a little uneducated on what the next steps are between this meeting happening and then the final yes or no. And if there's a change to that funding, if it's going to be six drones for $100,000 or not. And I wanted to speak also to the security concerns. I don't know if you guys have read, like, obviously the police and private companies are at different levels of security and how much money they can fund into those, but there's lots of companies like Ring and obviously our common laptops and phones that get hacked. And I don't, I would like to see like an audit that was done on how we are proposing that we're going to keep it safe because really large companies have issues doing, keeping the data safe and they have billions of dollars. So I'm not, I guess I just don't quite understand how we can guarantee that all that data will be safe. I also saw that videos of felonies will last, like we're going to store those for 7,300 days. That seems a little long and I understand, like I'm in the technology field and that's going to be a lot of data to store. I don't quite understand the benefit to the cost. I'd like to speak later. Also, I want to repeat the need for safety with bicycles and walking. My roommate has to use a bike to get to work and every day I'm nervous that he's going to come home and say that he's gotten hit because it happens all over. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, others wish to be heard?
Brandon Bilskey, second ward. How do we keep our people safe? And for communication purposes, communication com unis, with oneness, with unity, how do we keep our people safe? Well, the best way to keep our officers safe is to create real solutions that decrease, actually decrease violence. And violence goes up when you have the vast majority of the population one emergency away from scared necessity, when your prefrontal cortex shuts down because of fear of no options, no choices. And then the fight or flight response comes in and you must attack to survive as an individual. But you are the space of collective reason, the space that's supposed to be the historical voice that has been a slow but steady climb towards justice. We are on the land of stolen land based on colonialization. The first international journals of scholarly import were on how we were going to divide up slaves. And we created the system of industrialization, all this ability and abundance, but we teach our kids that everything is so scarce. Why? Because that narrative fuels and feeds a certain amount of people and hurts others. And the sad part is the people who are put on the front lines, the cops versus the people who desperately need help, who have been pushed by violence to mental health illness. 10% of homelessness is chronic. That means this is a revolving door of violence and the people who get hurt the most are poor people who become cops and who are taught that they are protecting and serving when they are putting their lives on the line for your greed. But in yours, because you've chosen leadership, in your privilege, you sit on this body. You can walk away any day. And I do not judge you as an individual, but I hold you to account as leaders in a civic space that is literally giving no zero dollars to the most vulnerable, which shows a blatant disregard. I mean, you could scoff Mark Washington and say that maybe $10 to $16 million of affordable housing funds when hundreds of people go hungry and starving, even people who are housed, even the 60% of working Americans who are relying on rent, these people who are probably not your true friends because you live an entirely different life in your luxury. So you're scoffing to write me off and say I'm not right about this is just, it's just sad. You are a rich man and you have control over everyone.
All right, others wish to be heard?
Buenas noches, soy el reverendo Lorenzo Miguel.
Good evening, my name is Reverendo Miguel.
Quisiera empezar con el apóstol Pablo dice, orad por vuestras autoridades.
I would like to start off with a prayer that says pray for our authorities.
Y John F. Kennedy dijo, no digan que va a ser el gobierno por mí. Pregunten que deben hacer ustedes por el país.
And how John F. Kennedy said, don't ask what is the government going to do for me? Instead say what could I do to help?
Nosotros como congregación o como iglesia oramos por ustedes.
Us as a congregation, as a church, we pray for you guys.
Cada miércoles en la mañana oramos por la señora Rosalynn Bliss porque es la mayor o mayor de esta ciudad.
Every Wednesday morning, we pray for Mayor Bliss because she is the head of our community.
Creo que necesitan sabiduría, necesitan mucha sabiduría para gobernar bien y para todos.
I believe to be able to govern right, you need a lot of intelligence.
Y con gratitud puedo decir que los jueves oramos por el jefe de la policía o chief de police todos los jueves en la mañana.
And with gratitude, I can say that we pray for the chief of the police department every morning.
Digo gratitud porque nunca he tenido problemas con la policía, ni afroamericanos ni blancos, nunca en los 33 años que vivo en Grand Rapids.
I say with gratitude because I have never had a problem with the police or with any white or African American in my 20 years of living here.
Thirty-three years in Grand Rapids. Creo que ustedes necesitan de nuestra también, de que nosotros podamos participar en este caso orando que Dios les dé la sabiduría necesaria.
And I will keep on praying in this case for God to keep giving you guys the strength and the intelligence to keep on going.
Y para finalizar, creo que estoy sobre el tiempo, para finalizar quisiera recordar que un policía, el jefe de la policía anterior, no recuerdo el nombre, Payne, Chief Payne, creo que.
And to finalize, I believe I'm going over time, but to recognize Chief Payne.
Alguien mencionó que él se acercaba a las personas y él vino a los lugares, a Garfield Park, y muchas veces conversamos con él.
He would always come close to the community at Garfield Park and we would always be able to talk to him.
Y quiero finalizar con lo que dijo el señor Jesucristo.
And I would like to finalize with what Jesus Christ said.
Amémonos los unos a los otros. Amemos a Dios primero y amemos los unos a los otros.
To love one another, love God first, but continue to love one another.
Muchísimas gracias y que Dios les bendiga.
Thank you very much and God bless.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Andrew again from Grand Rapids. I just want to reiterate my view against more drones for GRPD. First of all, I don't trust that it'll end with 100,000. I think it's going to cost an exponential amount for maintenance and training. And like so many have already said here, stop giving more money to GRPD and start investing it in our schools, transportation, mental health services. Mal trodders shouldn't be a replacement for inpatient mental health. I said what I said. You're institutionalizing them and you're You're institutionalizing them and you're not rehabbing them. You see the unhoused as individual cash cows. You see dollar signs. Give them housing. You broke up Hartside a couple of years ago at Christmas. You took away the only self-autonomy they had. You took away what they knew as family. Some of them don't have family and you took that away from them. Everyone who's not rich like Mark Washington or Anita Hitchcock are struggling right now. The job market in this city doesn't match the rent and cost of living. Do you know rent is way cheaper in Detroit and Chicago than it is here in Grand Rapids? Affordable housing, as we know it, needs to be completely revamped. A friend of mine lives in a HUD-based apartment. She got a job making just 15 an hour and now she is forced to pay market rate. Market rate for an income-based complex for a one-bedroom apartment is 1,200 for her. Y'all don't know the rent struggle because most of you own your homes and that's great. But housing is a human right. Again, we need resources. Give people resources they need to live and then watch and see what happens. Why aren't we willing to reimagine? Why aren't we trying a community of care rather than like what Lucas said, this notion that everyone is bad, when people are just trying to survive? Food insecurity, like why are essential workers and just people who work their butt off in general relying on food pantries to survive? So much money is being wasted. Convict Chris Scher, Justice for Patrick Leoya, and fuck GRPD.
All right, I'm gonna close the public comment and I'll turn to my colleagues. I'll start down here with Commissioner Perdue. Commissioner. Commissioner Asasi.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a few things I'd like to say. Señor Cepriano, gracias para tus palabras y tu corazón. I want to just talk about some next steps on the drones. Tonight was our public hearing that we had. So we talked about some of the engagement process, Chief. I had a chance to talk to you a little bit about that as well. I know we had a number of planned activities when we were going to do this back in 19 and so I'd like to see that continued follow-up. And so I'll be anxious to hear more information on that. Sometimes we will say when we will take this up again, this has just been the public hearing and we haven't noted that. So I'd like to, to point that out. Secondly, today, I, I do think we did have a good conversation in public safety today. That was a big, big document. Asanti came with that file. And it was a, a little bit like a book, but I think it highlights not just what is, not just what we're doing, but I think many things that people brought up today about what are these root causes. So the conversation about root causes is being had, is being had around this table. And quite honestly, we don't all own all of those root causes, but I think we need to talk about them and we need to understand them and we need to continue to focus on what we can control and then continue to focus on how do we influence in other areas. I wanted also highlight the, on May 18th, there will be the second engagement for our master planning process. So a lot of the things that we have discussed today, how this city is designed, will continue and I think we've had some good engagement, but it's starting, gonna start to get nicer. I think that's at JRPS University again on May 18th.
It is, at 5:00.
On the pedestrian safety pieces, I think this has also been a very much a topic of conversation at this table. I know Commissioner Knight and I have had a number of emails and I'm sure some of the new commissioners have as well. I know Mr. Nairmore was in the other room listening and I know every time we have a critical incident, we take that very seriously and work to, you know, the email that I had, we had individuals from Mobile GR from the police department, we had people from the executive office. We want this, again, that goes into the public safety piece and so we are always, I'm sorry to hear that, and always very focused on how do we make this city safe, what did they say, like from an eight-year-old to an 80-year-old. And then lastly, I just wanted a, a personal point of privilege tonight. It has now been seven months since my cousin Tino was murdered in the city. And I just want to highlight that there have, there continues to be calls through the silent observer. I think the, what do they call it? The reward is up to $5,000, looking for continued information. He was somebody who lived on the West Side, was West Side through and through. And, you know, our family is very interested in, in trying to figure out what happened to him on October 18th of last year. So those are my comments for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Roberts. City clerk?
Nothing.
Uh, city attorney?
Just add quickly to the discussion on drones. City manager Washington mentioned the oversight process with the Office of Oversight and Public Accountability and Public Safety. And I want to add to that list, NAACP, because the Department of Law and the Office of Oversight and Public Accountability met a great number of times, had extensive conversation before the policy was actually presented to the commission and approved. And so I'm sure that they also will have eyes on us, making sure that we're adhering to that policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, city manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo that and I think that's one of the reasons why the chief and has agreed to allow the NAACP to have one of the committee meetings and partner and collaborate with them. So I want to thank them for that partnership to make sure we hear community voice and understanding in relationship to the policy. I want to thank again all the staff who worked so hard for the presentation proposal of this year's 643 million dollar fiscal plan. The reason I smiled earlier was because I see staff who expect in the room, who are senior executive cabinet members who are here often, but when I see people in the back of the room from our facility staff, like Steve Prins and Tom Smith in the back waiting at this late night and it just makes me very appreciative for even our building maintenance staff who, facility staff who stays here to make sure these meetings are possible. So thank you, thank them and all the city employees who continue to, to serve our community. Also, I think there was really good work today on the Affordable Housing Fund. I want to thank the commissioners and the committee who worked on that to bring a proposal that will fund over 150 units and really, really low affordability levels at 30 to 60% AMI and really helping us bring some new units on, online. And I echo what Commissioner Asasi has said about the conversations during public safety. These are really big issues and local government alone will not solve them. We're going to do everything we can to make improvement, but it takes the effort of both us here at the city, the county level. We heard a lot about that in terms of engaging our county administrator and county leadership, public health department, state and federal partners as well. So I am encouraged by what I've heard today and looking forward to continue to move the work forward.
Thanks, city manager, and I'm glad you brought that up. I want to thank everyone who, who worked so hard to bring forward the recommendations over $4 million that we'll be dispersing soon to support housing projects as well as eviction prevention and other efforts in our community. Lot of good discussion today. Libby, I'm glad you were able to hear public safety. Hopefully other people will hear that as well. There's a lot of different efforts. But as we were really clear today, we need to work in close partnership with our partners in the community, both at the county and our nonprofit organizations. And, and I want to end and just say to you and everyone else, the last thing I want to do is to recess a meeting. But my job as chair is to make sure that this is a safe place for everyone and that people who come, Casey, it's my turn to talk. It is my turn to talk. And my job is to make sure regardless, one more time and I'm going to ask you to leave. My job is to make sure whether we agree with people or not who come to this podium to speak, that they have a right to be heard by this elected body. The rules are very clear. And when there is a disruption, I will continue to make sure that people stop disrupting other people, that they respect, that they have a right to be heard. And, and I will continue to do that and try to remind people to do that and hold people accountable when they are disruptive. So with that, we adjourned. Thank you for coming out tonight.